A regular meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call in a letter to the Commissioners dated June 13th, 2024 and reading as follows. The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, dear Commissioners, a regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 at 5:15 PM in the conference room of the Delta County Service Center. Sincerely yours, Nancy Presraki, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interest of the citizens of our county. We pray for the safety of our military men and women. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Melner?
Here.
Commissioner View?
Here.
Commissioner Crowe-Dale?
Here.
Commissioner Van Genhoven?
Here.
And Commissioner Jensen?
Here.
Okay, we'll call the meeting, uh, call it to order. Uh, thank you, everybody, for coming. And we will go on to the approval of the minutes of previous meeting on 6/4/24. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with some corrections, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Can I get a second? Or should I, should we do the correction first?
Yeah, let's hear the corrections.
Let's do the correction first.
Um, on, uh, page four, it would be, at the bottom of page four, item 11. I actually made the motion, not Commissioner Crowe-Dale.
Oh.
The second is still correct.
In 11?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so it's Jensen.
Yes.
Okay.
And then I also have just a simple correction under my report at the end. Uh, the last sentence, solid waste management, switching from a 401K should read 401A.
Oh.
Are there any more corrections? Can I get a motion to?
Actually, I have to rescind my previous motion.
You have to rescind your previous?
Yep, I will rescind my previous motion. And now, uh, I make a motion to accept the minutes with the corrections as presented.
Support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passed. Okay. We need approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Chair?
Can you just?
Um, administration has an added agenda item. It is a 30-day notice of appointments for Board of Election canvassers.
Is there any other corrections? That is it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? We have an agenda. Uh, presentation of written communications, receive them forward. Did we have?
There is none.
There is none? Okay. We will move on to, uh, reports of standing statutory special meetings and others.
There is none on that also.
And we will move on to public comment. And I have one person, Bob Barron.
Bob Barron, Eskenham Battalion. All right, I've got a couple things from your last meeting. I want to go over here quickly. Uh, you know, some of it's on the agenda. It's mixed, but the, you just approved the minutes, so that was part of the agenda. Uh, under MEAP, under Fuller Park, the, uh, forestry plan was put together there to help it qualify for being part of MEAP. They never put a recreational plan in. They don't generally do that. And their forest plan indicated that the, the areas that they were mapping were of mainly young growth timber, but there were some old, what they call wolf trees, like red maple. Uh, they're too old and big for market, so they're still there. And then, uh, there's something about an eagle's nest. It's basically been abandoned for quite some time and deteriorating. I want to urge the Board, as you have it on your agenda tonight, to, uh, get the building and completion of the pavilion and picnic at Fuller Park area, uh, completed as it's already been approved. And then, uh, pertaining to the parks and rec board, you removed last month Rory Madison and Alan Ettenhofer. Uh, I believe you violated your board bylaws rules. Uh, you need to have a public hearing, and it needs to take place to show cause and take public input. Unfortunately, your actions discouraged citizens from participating in the many boards, committees, and commissions that the county board appoints people to. Rory Madison and Alan Ettenhofer are the two most knowledgeable people, uh, about the parks and the county forests there is in this area. Their reputation, uh, their reputations have been tarnished by your actions, your inappropriate actions, and rest, uh, restitution needs to take place. And about the, uh, county board workshop. Uh, the board workshops are a very handy tool in upgrading Commissioner abilities. And, uh, from your actions last month, I think you need a little upgrade.
Any other public comment on the agenda items? Any other public comment on agenda items? Okay, we will move on to committee reports. The administrative, uh, administrators' report?
Good evening, everyone. I first want to start off with, we had a personnel committee meeting, and we're beginning the process of a complaint, um, form and the procedure that the county will be going through. We're just in the rough draft process right now. Um, we're going to move forward with seeking comments from department heads and review again at a later date. I also want to thank Hannaville for distributing their 2% monies. We received over $100,000 in Delta County. They are constantly, um, contributing to various community projects. We met for Parks and Recreation Commission. Um, we did not have a quorum, however, we opened up the floor to the public, and we listened to their concerns and what they would like to see for our future in our parks and rec. Um, a couple of the concerns were the Fuller Park project, the county forest, um, and how the process with the commission applications, as you see on our agenda, we have a few openings on there, because we also received a resignation in the five-year rec plan. Commissioner Melner, and Van Genhoven, and I participated in an emergency management plan update by, uh, Regional Director Lieutenant Stephen DeRuscia and our Emergency Management Coordinator, Paul Guyer. And they kind of explained the process and procedure of declaring emergencies in our area, along with how the grant funds work and such. A little update on our workers' compensation fund. Commissioner Melner, uh, went to the Michigan County's Workers' Compensation Fund Quarterly Update, and they have administered already 137 claims. This is not just Delta County claims, there's 80 members a part of this fund. Um, it is significantly higher in some areas of those claims, but all over, um, they were doing really good. We saved out on payouts because they switched to a new system. So, um, I think it was, originally started around $800,000 worth of claims, and they got it down to about $300,000. So, and that is all I have.
Okay. We'll take these one by one. Can I have a motion to put this on file?
I'll make a motion to accept the administrators' report as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay. Committee reports, financial, finance, report on 6/3/24.
So for the, so for the finance committee reports, um, those are actually going to be addressed in a lot of detail coming up here in items five through 10, um, in a presentation from our airport manager here. Um, yeah, starting at item five on the agenda.
Okay. Uh, you want to have a motion, put that on file then?
Move to put the finance committee minutes of 6/3/24 on file.
Do we have support?
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Uh, Personnel Committee, minutes of 6/12/24. I believe Steve?
Yep, we met. It was an enjoyable meeting. Uh, we did, uh, a lot of soul searching on what's best for our, our county and, uh, having some way for people to have communication with the proper department and spearheading their complaints to completion. It's still in the process right now. Uh, Ashley Oll already reported where she's going to go to staff and other stakeholders in the county to get their input, and then we'll, uh, have another meeting and pursue it, uh, eventually to come to the Board for approval. That's about it.
Okay. Can we have a motion to put Personnel Committee on file?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Uh, departmental updates. Does anybody have any departmental updates? Seeing none, we will move on to unfinished business. And that is Fuller Park, the pavilion and picnic area development.
Steve, we are our Parks Manager, as requested, to present to the Commission updates on the Fuller Park project, and you'll see these attached documents, um, in your board packet, along with, um, our latest approval, maximum cost of $75,000.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to, to be able to present this night to you. My name is Steve Weary, Delta County Park Manager, and I'm mostly here, uh, to take and discuss, uh, the Fuller Park project. And I know we've got some new faces on the Board here. I'm sure since probably March, you've been following along, so you're pretty much up to speed, I think, on, uh, what we're do, what we've been doing. But actually, back in, uh, March, there was a five-member Board, we're all 100% in favor of this project. And this will be my fourth time now addressing the county Board, and the last thing that I stated was, is the Board still on board with this project? I think this is an excellent project. I think it's, uh, very, very good for the community. And, so I did a little bit of homework, and if anybody has any questions, please ask, uh, by the, you know, after I'm finished here. But when I took and I brought this here in, actually in March, I assured the Board one thing, that there would be no pieces of machinery, nothing would go in there until we actually received two permits. One was a soil and erosion, and one is Eagle. So, right away in April, I, I was very fortunate to get Eagle to come up. And her name, Casey Abrams, and Mitch Hoochie, they both represent Eagle, they came up. There was no vegetation growing, and that's one criteria, but we walked all of the perimeter that we had GPS. And she dug a lot of holes, and about halfway through, she looked at me and said, "Mr. Weary, you have a project here." And I was kind of excited, because I didn't really know what to expect. And, so, you know, with that being said, she said, "What I would really like to see you do is to delineate this." So I actually brought this back to the Board, and we agreed to, to spend whatever money it took. It actually came to, I think, right around $1,500. It's been complete, you do have it in your packet there. So therefore, I've kept my word on everything that I said I would do so far. Mike Standard was the person that came out and delineated it. If you take any look at the one paper there, unless it's on your iPad, it's a paper with these little blue lines on it, right here. Now, if you take any look, everybody can see where the, where the lake is. So that big, long, blue line, we're not even concerned about it, never planned to do anything with that. If you still want us to go ahead with this project, we're going to apply for a Eagle permit. At the same time, we're going to apply to put a boardwalk. And that will take and cross that little wetland area, so there won't be any backhoe, there won't be any digging in there, other than a post hole digger, and then probably putting a maintenance-free type of boardwalk with the rail. That will give the day-use people, or anybody that comes into that area, 100% full occupation of that whole lake area. They can walk out, go to the left, they can go to the right, and then they can endure that whole beach. Uh, right now, with, uh, campground on both sides, they can't go across, uh, someone that paid for a lot. It wouldn't be ethical to do that. So we want to make sure that we have everything we can for outdoor recreation for the public that uses this park, uh, to actually be able to use that beach, which is, which is a big criteria, what we're trying to do. So, if you take and look at where the road is, that would be, you can kind of see the curve in it, that opposes the lake way up in the front. There's two little blue spots, one's kind of a line, one's like a little circle. Don't plan to, to do anything with that neither. There's nothing we would ever do to develop the park up front there, to ever develop that. So then you look at the other, kind of an oblong structure there. It's approximately 15 feet across, and we're looking at about 25 feet wide, because Eagle would require that we put a culvert in, probably around 18 inches, set it down, uh, probably two to four inches, so everything can pass through. So there will actually be, um, very, very little delineation that we have to actually do for Phil. Everything else across that, you know, you'll see another little spot, kind of to the south there. We're not looking to do anything with that neither. But as you come up on top, that's all, that's all highland. There's no wetlands there whatsoever. And, um, you know, with that being said, there's a couple other issues. One is, uh, I actually got a call from John Mays yesterday. He's in the Easter U.P. on vacation. I was kind of surprised that, when the phone rang, but we spoke for 45 minutes. So, the thing is with the trust fund, Mary Carlock doesn't have anything to do, really, with this aspect of it. She comes up and checks the projects, she will be up this summer, and I am on the list for her to visit, for her to visit with me. John Mays also said that there is no way the trust fund would ever say we could not expand and do a project there. And they researched this very, very thoroughly. And he told me that there is a day-use area currently there by removing two sites. We have a boat launch area that will house about three pickups. I have yet this year out there seen anybody occupy that day-use area. And our host camper, Pete DeHan and his wife, I asked if they would keep an eye on it. And they're out there all the time. They've seen three people thus far, and they're not there every second, but, uh, they're out there with, with the cart quite a bit. Um, it's, it's not really being utilized that much for, for either boating or picnicking. Uh, the silt that comes in from the bay, you just can't get a decent boat even out of it. But I always say, "Hey, people like to kayak." So let them take and, still use that boat launch to kayak or paddleboard or do whatever they want. We want everybody, uh, from Delta County, they pay, you know, it's their property, and so we want them to be able to use it. But he said that as long as we went through the proper channels, and like we did through delineation, and we can get a permit from Eagle, they would never, uh, stop us from, uh, expanding out there. Other person that I talked to today was Aaron, and he's the one that represents MEAP. So just to clarify a little bit about MEAP, we had a, a long conversation. He said that he would be open to actually attend the Conservation District Board and, and thoroughly explain what MEAP stands for. He would actually come to a board meeting or written questions that you may have, that he would take and answer any questions you have about MEAP. And basically, MEAP is not a contract. You don't get any money, you don't pay any money, you can opt out at any time. You can change the plan, and if you do that, and if you re-up in five years, they're going to ask you, "Did you make any changes?", which you can do. So, the only thing that they ask is, when, when something gets written up, that you, you try to follow, this, you know, as closely as you can, but if there's a, like in this project, if there's a project that can be done, they're, they're not going to stop it. They have nothing to do with wetland, they have nothing to do with, with any of that. And it doesn't mean that MEAP isn't a nothing, but it's not anything that anybody is bound by at any time. You can completely pull out of it and do what you want, and, so, I guess, uh, that being said, I actually have Mike Standard here who did the delineation. Would you mind if he came up?
No. Bring him on, bud.
The only reason I'd ask is if you have any questions for him, or if there's anything I said that may not be accurate, um, he's the one that did the delineation. I'm not a professional in this field. I only told you that I would do everything above board, I would never do anything to put this county in, in jeopardy or liability, and, and that's the way I'll always operate. But the next thing that we're going to go for is going to be a Eagle permit. I don't want to spend one penny of taxpayers' money this, this forward here, unless I got the majority of the Board that's willing to move forward on this. Uh, that would be a shame, because right after the permit, that's when we're going to spend about $30,000 with the parking lot, prepping for the pavilion, and whatnot. But the impact is going to be so little here, and we're not going in there to, to cut all the trees down. We get into the parking area where there's a pretty cleared area now, we want to have walking trails to the pavilion and the new playground. And, I don't know if Mike wants to add anything.
Um, only that, uh, I, I've been doing this for over 30 years, um, and I can tell you that Steve is following all the rules and all the procedures that Eagles can require. The impact that he's proposing is extremely minimal. We're looking at 400 square feet, where they're usually measuring things in acres. Um, we're talking about 20 yards of fill, which is one large dump truck full. So, being, the fact that you have already had Eagle out there, they know what you're proposing to do, it's, nothing's a slam dunk, but it's, it's pretty evident that they're, they're going to back your project. So, um, the next step will be, if you, you approve this, you submit the permit, and then Eagle will go out there. They've already been there, so they probably have a very good idea of what they think of what my impacts are. If they disagree with my delineation, then they'll make contact with us, and I'll go back out there with them, and we can, we can redo whatever they want done. But, um, as far as impacts, it is, it's extremely minimal. So I don't know if you have any questions for me, or?
Anybody have any questions for?
I'm curious, you said 40 square feet?
400.
400, okay.
Yeah.
That makes, that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah.
Forty, I was going to say, that's, yeah, pretty much.
Commissioner?
Um, I just have a question for Mr. Weary. Um, you know, you, you expressed that you spoke with Mr. Mays, and you said, you know, they can't or won't, you know, stop us from doing, you know, this type of project. Um, but could it affect future grants?
Absolutely not. Um, the only way you can apply to the trust fund is you need to have a five-year park plan in place. It, it's kind of a shame that ours actually, you know, elapsed, and, but, uh, for whatever reason, talking with, uh, Mr. Mays, it will, it will definitely not take two years to put a park plan together. We're not, we're not building bridges, we're not building motels, we're not building roads. It, uh, there's a guideline to follow, we got to do an inventory of all of the park stuff, and then, it can be, something as simple as, we need a new roof on the bathroom, the shower building at Fuller Park. The ball toilet needs to be rebuilt, which we already have in the plans and the quotes together for the fall, uh, when we go through budgets here. That can be year number one. Year number two can be a handicap ramp at Pioneer Trail Park. There is nothing within our park system that is so detailed that we shouldn't be able to, to put something together very quick, very reasonable. We need to have public hearings. So I could easily see four, five, I'll even give it the benefit of the doubt for, for six months. But i- as far as, uh, this delineation thing here, we can legally fill up to 1/3 acre. And right now, I, myself, I've got no desire to do that, because it would be no purpose to, to take and get into any wetland area that we will never do anything with. Everything will be beyond the parking lot and all on the upland, and there's only so much real estate there. Um, I'm all about the environment myself. I don't believe in destroying it.
Could I ask you one more question?
Absolutely.
Um, so when I was walking out, um, and I was looking to see where we were going to, you know, potentially put this pavilion, and then where the ribbons were for the boardwalk and things of that nature, can you explain to me why you feel it's better to spend $75,000 on a pavilion and a playground that's away from both sides of, of camping? And not just take out, like, where the day-use is right now, and take out those two or three campsites and expand the day-use there? Because I was there, and there actually were people using it. Um, the, the one, which I thought was great, right?
Absolutely.
But when I look at it, I look at, I, I go up to the day-use area, and I think we have this beautiful beach that the public probably doesn't see, like, they can use it because of the fact that the, that the day-use is off to the side, and then we have those campsites. I think that, what, three along the beach?
There's two.
Two, okay. So, my question is, for how much we garner in income for those two sites, where we could expand the day-use area there, why are we spending $75,000 to plow trees and, and fill and do a parking lot and a pavilion? I guess I'm just not understanding what the thought process was of putting it where it is.
Yeah, I can answer that.
Okay.
Um, right now, we currently have, I guess how, how this whole thing kind of started. You happen to have a campground, and there's camping on both sides. The campground just happens to have a lake in it. So there really wasn't any area, um, and I'm in my 14th year here, it's only been a couple of years since this whole thing kind of came to a head about this whole day-use area. The taxpayer-sponsored to put all the infrastructure in there, which costs money. And it's tough enough to make money that you're going to have to take out more than, than two sites in addition, so that means we lose four sites. So every year and perpetually moving forward, you're losing income. The other thing is, is the reason it's an ideal spot is you've got your two campgrounds on both sides. And you didn't want to take and have the public driving through either side. Kids can take and come from both areas, there's a nice walkway trail, and it's not that far. And so it's a lot safer also. The people that come from town or wherever and just use it for the day, they're going to use the parking lot. The people that are camping are going to actually walk to the playground. So I, I look at, you're going to have loss of revenue, and I'm not even sure that this project is going to, going to total 75,000, that's just what we budgeted. But, uh, to have something where it doesn't disturb the campers, that infrastructure, that infrastructure is in place, and to have a safe environment for outdoor recreation for the public. and have a safe environment for outdoor recreation for the public, I'm telling you, the public want it. And it's going to be a hot topic if it doesn't go in. As for me, I'm at the will of the board. And I'm only telling you, I'm only here as a spokesman, that I will do everything above board. I will 100% almost guarantee you, we will get the Eagle permit. It's just whether we have three members that want to keep it moving forward.
I actually have two questions for Mr. Berry. On the one where you showed the parking lot and the pavilion and the playground, I guess it's southeast of there, is that where you're making a trail continuously through to the water from there as well, or only over to the trail? Where, I'm trying to visualize, since it's not on your map.
Are you talking about to the lake?
Yes.
If I take in, it's probably going to be almost in the center.
Okay.
It's not going to impact very much. It's going to be able to be trimmed, so it'll be a really nice maintenance free boardwalk down to there. But then anybody that wants to come from the public can utilize that whole beach and not interrupt anybody. And it seemed like there was a big need for a bigger, you know, day use area. I think that we can provide it. And we do have the money secured, it's been passed. You don't get very many chances at this because we do, we probably will have carryover money again. The parks are doing very, very well, they're very busy. I just think this is an excellent project for the public.
I mean, if use and demand arise here, you have room to expand. The other areas you don't. How far, have you started the process for the permitting with Eagle yet?
Not until after this meeting. Actually, what I'm hoping, what I requested to be on here tonight, I'd actually like to have a roll call vote of the commissioners to see who's in favor of moving it forward. And you need to understand, it does really not matter to me. Like I say, I've got a job to do as park manager. I'm in the park a lot, I've been here 14 years, I know what the people want, I know what the needs are. But at the end of the day, if the majority don't support it, I'm not one to sit and fight and argue about it. I'll just move on to another project. I refuse to get into politics. And so I don't get on either side. I just keep my nose clean, and I do the job I was hired to do. And that's really the work under Ashley, which has been a pleasure.
Does anybody else have any more questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, when did this project eventually started? It wasn't with our board, was it? Wasn't it with a rec department board or something prior? Do you know exactly when this came about, or was it when we voted the funding for that back in March?
No, it started way before that. It actually started when the day use area became an issue. And the way that whole thing happened, if people don't understand it, I'm the one that actually came to the board and asked to put 14 sites over in the new area. I found a flowing well there when I was mowing and didn't know it was there. There was an electric box there. I seen it way underutilized. So I said, why don't we put in some camping? People want to camp out here, but they're having a hard time to get out here because it was only 25 sites. And then we actually moved it to, I believe, 39. And then we lost actually three with this day use thing here. But it, I just think it's needed.
Well, to follow up on it too, when I was walking through there, I was told by you that the people that are, the public that comes there, there's no parking for them to utilize the beach. So this would serve that purpose too, and would be a great benefit for those that want to picnic there and have access to that lakeshore.
Yeah, if you were to take and utilize the camping site that's currently there, you'd basically destroy that whole site because of the parking, the pavilion, the playground, and any other thing that you may take and add to it. I've got a different option and a different place to put it. Rather than put it there, you guys don't, the majority don't agree on this. But yeah, two years ago, when this whole thing kind of started...
I'm sorry, Kelly. No, it's okay. You said you have an alternate place where you would like to put it? Is that what you just said?
I said I've got another place that we possibly could talk about.
Oh.
But I would rather wait to see what the board feels, if we got enough votes to move forward with it. Because if we do, my recommendation is to move forward with it without delay. I don't want to spend any money from the taxpayers, and I've got an enormous amount of time into this. I did my due diligence for 400 square feet of wetland. Two-thirds of Upper Michigan is wetland. And state and federal government and the private's got wetland. Talking with John and talking with Aaron, we both concur. We've got more wetland than we need. When you've got something that thousands and thousands of people can come and enjoy, it's a no-brainer for me. But again, I'm not at odds with anybody. If it doesn't happen, I'll just move on.
Well, can I just ask one more question? Do you know of hand if this Fuller Park project was in the previous five-year plan?
Are you talking about the pavilion part here?
Yes.
No, it was not.
Okay.
But this didn't happen until the whole day use area came up. And that's only been about two years.
So at that time, the five-year plan had already been expired?
Yeah, and Mr. Mattson, the parking rec that we had prior, kind of like what happened at our first one, we had one person show up and two commissioners, which was disappointing to me. But people just quit coming. We could never have a quorum, so Rory said, why have it?
So can I ask you why, when we have conversations on the phone, you tell me that there's no rush and we can take our time with this? And then you come up here and you say, oh, we have to go, you know, we have to do this now without delay. Where did that change? Because I just talked to you yesterday.
Nope, nope. I'm going to agree with the statement you just made. We have all the time in the world that it takes.
Okay.
And that's the reason why I've been wanting this advisory board. I want the public to have input. But I guess what I'm trying to say is this, is we had five commissioners that were for this. We've got a change of the board, we may have a change of face of the board in November. I don't know. We don't have to rush it so fast that, we do got to get an Eagle permit. I just want to know, are we still moving in the direction? Do we have enough votes to move in the direction? But really, what is there to really examine beyond this point other than get the Eagle permit? If you can get an Eagle permit, you've jumped through all the hoops. And if they're supportive of it, and the county's supportive of it, and then we get the soil and erosion, but like I say, I'm just here to leave it on to you guys.
So just to confirm, the state is on board with this?
Who is?
The state?
Are you talking the trust fund?
Mm-hmm.
The trust fund said that they would not tell us we could not improve the property.
But it would have no impact on any future grant funding if we did move forward?
No. Actually, to get a five-year park plan, but my plan is this, because we have the money for the pavilion, we have the money for the parking lot, is the reason for not delaying it two, three years, which would make no sense to me, by February, I can apply to the trust fund. And that's where we can probably grab $150,000 for the playground. The park needs a playground.
So in your opinion, it's more valuable to spend up to $75,000 to do this project than remove four sites in an already cleared area and put up a pavilion and a potential playground there? You think it's more cost-effective to spend this $75,000 than to lose those four sites? How much do we gain out of those four sites a season?
Absolutely, I agree with putting it in. And you're going to have to get rid of more than four sites because of the parking lot.
Well, at first I said two, and then you said, no, you'd have to get rid of four. And now you're saying it's more than four.
It will be more than four.
Okay.
You're going to destroy that whole side because of the parking and the pavilion. And you still got to leave it open for the boat launch, so I mean, you still got to, you can't take and shut that off. So you're going to actually basically destroy the whole area.
Plus, you still have to pay for the pavilion no matter where it's at.
And that was going to be my comment.
And the playground.
There has to be a cost for the playground and the pavilion regardless of what land you... Is that like $50,000, $60,000?
Playground, he said he was going to get on a grant.
Well, later on, but I'm just...
I was going to try to get a grant, yes.
But what I'm saying is, the building has a value to it outside of the use of the land. It's not wasting $75,000. If it costs $50,000 for the building, regardless of where it is, it's going to be $50,000. I'm just using a figure.
You're 100% correct about the only thing that's going to be a little more cost-effective is just putting in the driveway and the parking lot, which is not outrageous. Everything else has to come with financial anyway, so you're not saving $75,000. And then with the loss of the sites over, say, 10 years, if I was at my desk with the calculator, I could do the math, you'll find that it could be substantial over time.
And that pavilion now is 50, in three years, it could be 75.
Or more, yes. It costs inflation.
The way things are going up right now, it's crazy.
See, and the biggest thing that I looked at is the cost. We have the money, we okayed it. Just alone, back in March, we approved delineation of that property to go forward with this. And it was set about $750, RFPs. Did we only get one RFP? And it was double what we thought. So you can imagine, if we delay anything, what the potential could be for two years from now, and it could cost the taxpayers a lot more, and we wouldn't get to, have a hard time getting extra money for that. That's the way I'm looking at it right now. It's already approved project, and I do support what the prior board passed before, and I'll stand by that right now.
Well, the reason why I wanted to address the board is, you know, my time is limited here. I've been 25 years as park manager. My assistant holds a builder's license also. I would ask that you guys take and utilize maybe the talent that you have to actually get this stuff done. And I know that there's been a lot of turmoil the last couple of years, I won't be a part of that. But sometimes I feel like I'm in Washington DC, and the stroke of a pen, and things just change. So that's why I wanted to just take and come and just know where we're headed. Don't see me upset or anything, no matter which side it falls on, but I am very careful at spending taxpayers' dollars, and I know Ashley is too. But I just think it's a great project, and it would be unfortunate not to do it. But this is a board decision. I'm glad I don't have to make that.
Does anybody else have any more comments?
The only thing I would just like to say is that I think that we should focus on a rec plan before we move forward on this project, but I understand it was approved by the former board.
So...
And I would make a motion that we move forward with the pavilion and picnic area development at Fuller Park with the $75,000 cap on the park pavilion and picnic area development project.
And I'll second that.
But I asked for a roll call vote. I don't know if I can do that, but that's what I like.
I can ask for one. Nancy?
View?
Yes.
Crowsdale?
Yes.
Van Genhoven?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Ann Melner?
Yes.
I can't thank the board enough. And I agree with you, Kelly, the fact that let's take our time and let's get it right. And let's make sure that we have that area that we can keep pristine for a long, long time. I don't believe you'll regret this decision by the public. But I thank you for your time and for still being on board.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to new business, payment of bills.
I have examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following, and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to the claimants for the amounts allowed. $753,877.31 and commissioner expense of $1,195.80.
Okay, can I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, roll call. Hugh?
Yes.
Crowsdale?
Yes.
Van Genhoven?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Ann Melner?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to rules of procedure decorum. And I believe Commissioner Kelly, and she'll kid, I could say that.
I love that you say that, John. That's fine. Okay, so...
What business item is this?
This is number two, rules of procedure decorum. So on 9/9/23, it was approved by the board to adopt the rules of procedure decorum at public meetings as it was presented on that date. I would like to hear from our prosecuting attorney, who was never given the opportunity to present her decorum policy. And then comparing in the agenda packet, you can see how it is currently stated, and then what would have been presented by Prosecutor Wickman. And I would be looking for a potential rescind of that vote on 9/19/23. So if Lauren is here, is that okay, Chair, that we ask her to come up?
Yes, yes.
Should all be in your packets?
Yes.
Okay.
If you could just explain the basic differences of the...
Yep, the biggest difference is the policy, and I didn't reinvent the wheel with this policy. I went and pulled from a lot of different jurisdictions, municipalities, townships across the state. This one is actually primarily based off of McComb Township. It doesn't appear it's ever been put through the rigors of actual litigation. But what really caught my attention when I was going through it, and when I added a couple of things, was the number of steps. Because from my opinion, removing somebody from a public meeting is a drastic step. So yes, there's a provision in here that allows for that to be done in a drop of a hat if it's that bad. But there's plenty of intermediary steps to allow for that person to stay, to participate, to listen, but still understanding that there's a certain level of decorum that needs to be had in a public meeting, in a process that would fall to the chair, as well as the board members as a whole, to essentially execute a due process situation right here in the moment, so that person can be heard, the board can be heard, and that process is all outlined in a multi-step process or procedure.
Anybody have questions?
I'd like to make a motion to rescind the vote of adopting the rules of procedure decorum order at the public meeting as presented from 9/19/23.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion?
Basically, Mr. Chair, what is the issue of this decorum procedure that is so bad for our county? Even though I remember voting against it, because...
So it's not that it's, I'm sorry?
No, no, that's fine, because you're the one bringing the vote. I would appreciate you...
It's not that there's anything particularly wrong. There are some grammatical errors in it, there are some spelling errors in it, and it doesn't give a full outline of, you know, if this happens, then this. If this happens, then this. And with Ms. Wickman's rules of decorum, it's actually laid out, it's based on case law, which you can see on the bottom, you know, where she excerpts, you know, certain things. So it's more of a legal document. Would that be correct, Ms. Wickman?
Correct. The way I looked at it is, everybody who's coming into the room should have the same understanding of what the expectations are. And this outlines it, that everybody can have that understanding of what does out-of-order mean, what does breach of the peace mean? Because that's available to them to actually pull up and see, this is what that means, that's what it means to me, that's what it means to this board. So everybody's on the same page from the get-go.
Okay, and my concern was that these rules of decorum can change at the beginning of every year or every new commission, correct?
True.
Okay, so I mean, within five months, we're going to look at this again. So we're just rescinding what's on the books and going to what? We have nothing forward?
Well, my first part, my first motion would be to rescind the vote to adopt the rules of procedure decorum order at the public meeting as presented on 9/19/23. And then my second part, if that were to pass, would be to motion to accept the rules of procedure decorum policy as presented by our prosecutor.
Okay, can you, Mr. Chair, I would like to... Okay, can you, Mr. Chair, I would like to see that as one motion, rescind this one and add the new one. You can't do that?
Two different...
It's got to be two different.
Two separate.
You can't have multi-part motions like that.
Shows you how much I have to learn yet. That's okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. Anybody oppose?
No, I would like to motion to accept the rules of procedure decorum policy as presented by Prosecutor Lauren Wickman.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? Motion pass.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Number three, rules of procedures, appointments by chair, and I believe that is Commissioner Kelly.
Oh, it is. What I'm looking for is a rescind of the vote to allow the county board chair to make appointments without ratification from the board. This was presented at the one-seventeen-twenty-three meeting, and I'd like to go back to our past practice in rules of procedure four-point-one-two-seven. It lays out specifically the authority of the board chair only making appointments with the approval of the board.
Is that a motion you're making?
No, it's, that...
You're rescinding?
Well, I would be looking for a motion, but if I have to make it, I can.
So we need a motion?
That, will this be a two-part one? Well, let's...
Well, this is simply one that we can just go back to past practice. It doesn't have to, it doesn't have to have a new, a new vote or a new policy going forward. Currently, our policy four-point-one-two-seven states that...
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Jensen.
I need a motion?
Okay, I'll make the motion to rescind the vote to allow county board chair to make appointments without ratification from the board as presented on one-seventeen-twenty-three.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Mr. Chair, what do you mean by without ratification? I could ask, Ms...
I don't know, that would be something that you, that was voted on on one-seventeen-twenty-three.
Okay, I'm misunderstanding it. The old policy, and I don't think I supported this one either, I'm not sure, was that the chair makes the appointments. Correct me if I'm wrong. If there's a disagreement, a commissioner can bring a motion forward and get it seconded to challenge an appointment, or ask for some type of different appointment for them or somebody else, correct? Is that how it used to be, and we changed that?
So four-point-one-two-seven states upon his or her election and subject to the approval of the majority of all members of the board, the chair shall proceed to appoint all standing and special committees, and shall designate the chair of each committee.
What ended up happening is the chair made the appointments.
Okay.
And then there was a motion to say that we could not challenge what we got.
Right. It says, Board one-seventeen-twenty-three moved by Commissioner Peterson and seconded by Commissioner Barron to allow the county board chair to make all appointments without ratification from the board. Motion carried, Melner opposed.
Okay. I just want a clarity on what we're voting on.
Yeah.
Well, right, it's just like when we, when he made our committee assignments, and then I asked if we could have discussion, and he allowed it. Well, he could have just said no, and this is the way it's going to be.
By the old rule, but the new...
By this, by this rule that was, that went put into order on one-seventeen-twenty-three. So I'm just asking to remove that, so then it would go back to just our regular four-point-one-two-seven.
And I would support that to the extent that no one has any more rank of the five here, we're all equal. So that's why this needs to go back to the way it was.
So we have a motion, second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Okay, number four, central dispatch, nine-one-one millage renewal ballot language.
I have dispatch director Jen Peterson here to introduce the renewal language for the nine-one-one millage.
So I think they're in the packets, right? The new language that is, or the language that's being presented for the ballot is exactly the same language aside from the dates, from the twenty-nineteen millage. There's no increase, it's the same rate as the twenty-nine, twenty-nineteen increase. So basically, it's just our five years is up, it's time to renew, we just need approval on the language, if there's any questions on that.
Mr. Chair, I would just like the public to realize that it's just point-seven-five mil, seventy-five cents on each one-thousand of taxable value, and it's for another five years, two thousand twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-nine, and it is no increase in what we are paying now. It's just...
Yeah, and I think it was the five years prior to that, it was the same amount, too. So this, we haven't, the rate has not been raised.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any more questions for Jen?
Excuse me.
No? I need a motion.
I'll move that we add this language to the ballot, the nine-one-one millage renewal resolution to be put on the ballot.
Okay.
As written.
The November ballot.
Yep, the November ballot, yes.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Thank you.
That requires a roll call.
Oh, sorry.
Oh.
Roll call. You.
Yes.
Crowsdale.
Yes.
Van Genhoven.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Ann Melner.
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to number five, RFP aviation fuel supply agreement, and I believe our airport manager is going to be talking about that. Matter of fact, he will have probably four of them.
Five of them. Good evening, members of the board, and good evening, members of the public, and I'll start by apologizing, because it was never my intention to appear before the board with seven items of business at once. But as often is the case at the airport, business kind of ebbs and flows, and some of these items have been worked for months, others just kind of dropped on our plate, you know, within the past couple of months, past few weeks, and we've worked really diligently and very quickly to try to get to your attention so we can make decisions on them. The first of these items is the RFP for the aviation fuel supply agreement, and I don't know how much time you've had to go through it, I'm sure some pretty substantial board packets, but I, this originally came to my attention, the impetus behind this RFP was when I started at the airport last October, one of the issues that we identified was that the aging fuel truck at the airport needed to be replaced. Leaky fuel truck is never a good situation at the airport, mechanically it was on the verge of failure. We got thirty years of use out of it, so the county definitely got adequate use out of it, but it is time for a replacement. Since I brought this to the airport board's attention last November, we've spent, when I say we, I refer to myself and Assistant Manager Robin Morrison, we've spent a significant amount of time researching alternatives to procuring a new fuel truck in the interest of trying to save the county as much money as possible. We initially entered discussions about refurbishing the existing fuel truck, potentially using different types of frames and chassis to essentially rebuild the truck. We sought out the opinions of subject matter experts, ranging from our own board, or our commission here, the road commission, to private businesses out on town, subject matter experts in diesel repair, things of that nature, reached out to other airport managers, did a lot of due diligence, and the decision was, we arrived at the decision that the truck did in fact need to be replaced. So once the airport board decided to move forward with that, it was, I was tasked with doing a significant amount of research into our alternatives and our options for purchasing a fuel truck, and that's the prospectus that I put together, the seventeen-page report. That was written so that anyone who may not have a more thorough knowledge of how aviation fueling systems work, or how the fuel trucks work, it kind of details the entire program from the ground up, and what our options are as far as procuring a different, or a new fuel truck, rather. And our options are essentially this, we can, the airport can outright purchase a new fuel truck, we could independently finance a fuel truck, we could go through, you know, a third-party institution, a bank or what have you. We could also independently seek out a leasing option of a fuel truck. But the third most preferable option, and I should back up, instead of purchasing new, we could also purchase used, or finance used, or we could lease used. But the most preferable option that I discovered was entering into what we refer to as a fuel supplier or a fuel branding agreement. This is something that our airport currently does not have. We are not under contract with any major bulk fuel distributor or seller. We do not have an agreement, we're not under contract for that right now. But in putting this prospectus together, I will say that the six neighboring airports that I studied and spoke with, all of them are under these fuel supply and fuel branding agreements, and by whole and large, these agreements are very beneficial to the airport, to the end user, in the sense that they offer us a tremendous amount of benefits, the least of which, or the most important of which, is that we have the ability to lease for a fixed term, a replacement or a new fuel truck for significantly less cost to the airport and the county than it would be if we were outright purchasing one or financing one, which is why I'm coming before you this evening. The RFP that I put together is to solicit bids for a fuel supplier, fuel branding agreement, pardon me, with the stipulation being part of that agreement that it includes the procurement or the leasing of a new or slightly-used Jet A refueler truck. The refueler truck that we are seeking is a five-thousand, pardon me, a three-thousand-gallon capacity truck. The current truck we have is twenty-two-hundred gallons. We need the increased capacity and the increased flowage, a more robust system, so we can continue to promptly service the jets of increasing capacity and size that the airport has seen. We've seen those changes come down the road in the past weeks and months, and years for that matter, and they continue to get a little more robust where they require greater amounts of fuel. So having a larger, slightly larger fuel truck would help us. The good news is, for the type of operations we conduct at the airport, the type of aircraft that we service, we don't need a much larger fuel truck. Fuel truck prices are generally tied to the capacity of the truck, so for instance, a five-thousand-gallon capacity truck would cost much more than a three-thousand, and they go all the way up to, you know, ten-thousand gallons and beyond. So three-thousand is what we were looking for. The overall recommendation that I made as part of this prospectus is on the final page, on page seventeen, the conclusion is that we determined that the airport, we want to draft and submit this RFP for fuel service or fuel branding agreement that includes the leasing of a used Jet A refueler. This will keep costs low, while also affording the airport the flexibility to make in future decisions related to the outright purchasing of a Jet A refueler or contracting with an FBO, which is a fixed base operator or a business on the airport that would provide the truck in the service. Moreover, the turnaround time for receiving a used truck is comparatively shorter than that of a new truck, and staff will also be provided to improve efficiency. So basically, by entering into this fuel branding agreement, we would receive and be able to use a newer, slightly-used truck at a significantly lesser cost, and we would also enjoy the support of a company that would provide our staff, not only our end users out on the airfield, but also those in the administration office, the tools they need and the knowledge to use different equipment and software that will improve workflows and efficiency at the airport. In exchange, of course, there's always, you know, you never get anything for free, of course, in exchange, the company that we would potentially enter this agreement with, the fuel supply agreement, one of the major feature of it is that it is essentially an exclusivity arrangement that ties us for the length of the term, whatever we decide upon, to that particular fuel company, where we agree that we will only purchase Jet A fuel from that particular company for a term of five, seven, or possibly ten years. I believe in RFPs, if not to exceed seven years. And in reality, how this works is that, you know, fuel prices are essentially tied to a diesel sulfur index, that's a global index and a national index. So we would not be signing an agreement where we would necessarily agree to a certain price per gallon where we'd be purchasing this fuel, rather, we would agree to observe this index. So we wouldn't have to be concerned about price gouging, gouging, or, you know, being put over the barrel, so to speak, because these companies want to remain competitive with one another. If we want to make a comparison, I guess a good example would be if, you know, if in your personal vehicle, if you're driving around town and you want to save a few cents on a tank of gas, is it worth your time to drive across town to save, you know, a penny or two on a gallon of gas, or do you just, you know, pay for whatever that price is? This fuel supply agreement, although it ties us to one particular company, or would tie us to one particular company, it really would benefit the airport in the long run, and we would still have the flexibility of getting the training and the equipment that we need.
This was approved by finance, right?
Yes. Do you want to talk anything about finance on it before we do this?
No, this is, I mean, this was also the recommendation from the airport advisory board as well. So was to go forward with the fuel branding. So I'd make that motion to go forward with the fuel branding, RFP.
Well, I would like to add, there are a few minor changes that I would like to make to the RFP. There's just a few typos in there that need to be changed, but more importantly, on page three of the RFP, there is the schedule of events, section one-point-four. That was originally worded as the bids being received no later than June twenty-seventh and being open on June twenty-seventh. This didn't make it to the board as quickly as I had intended due to the delay and the appointment of the new commissioners and the things that had happened in weeks past. So what I would propose that we do is just revise this portion, one-point-four of the RFP, to make it so that the bids must be received no later than August first, and that we open them on August first, and then I can bring those findings back before the airport board on August twelfth, and then finally return back to the county board with their endorsements on August twentieth. So we'd just be changing those dates, so we can allow interested companies a greater amount of time to submit their bids.
Mr. Chair, then I would amend my motion to include the updated dates of August first in lieu of what's currently written.
Okay, do we have a second?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Wait, I had a question.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Chair, I mean, if I, we're buying bids on a truck and a branding fuel contract agreement at the same time, correct?
Yes, that's correct. We were soliciting for bids for the fuel branding or fuel supply agreement, which would include terms associated and tied to the truck.
Okay.
And these agreements that we receive, they're essentially boilerplate agreements. We would go back and forth and negotiate, be able to redline them and tailor them to our needs at the airport.
And they're going to be very competitive for our location here, as they are with the other airports. I mean, they have access and trucks coming in here all the time. I mean, I was on the airport board, and I remember I was talking about that, but I never got any definitive answer to make sure that we're not going to be paying more because of our distance or location, and I just want to make sure that's okay.
No, that's correct. They will be competitive rates. Out of the six airports that I studied as part of this report that I put together, they use three different companies.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Are we leasing or buying?
We are desiring to lease.
No, no, I was there when they did that, and leasing has a lot of advantages.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Okay, we move on to number six, airport snow removal equipment building.
Yes, so this, this item is unfortunately, it's a bit more complicated than the preceding one. And this is really a matter of having the correct equipment in place, the ideal amount of equipment in place at the airport, but lacking the correct infrastructure. As many of you already know, we recently received a new snow plow back in December, and that snow plow is quite a significant machine. It's a very large machine, it's very sophisticated, and it does the job of multiple machines of one. It's, 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 it has the ability to both plow and brush at the same time, and it permits a single worker to basically, essentially do the task of, you know, two or three workers. That bid, the federally obligated or the federally backed grant that we had, rather, the project, that project was basically essentially divided into two halves. The one half was the awarding of the truck, the obtaining of the truck, or the plow, rather, and the second half was expanding the existing operations building that is located west of the main terminal to expand a bay to permit us a space which we could then use to park the plow when it wasn't in use. So we need the space to accommodate the plow. Now, things move forward relatively smoothly with the plow. There were some delays in the assembly and delivery of the plow due to some issues with the company that was putting it together and the paperwork that they had to file with the FAA, but that all got worked out. The plow nevertheless eventually arrived at the airport in December, last December. Unfortunately, the other half of the... Unfortunately, the other half of the grant, uh, never fully came to fruition, and that was the expanding of the existing building to provide a sufficient parking for the plow. And the reason it didn't come together is because when that went out for bids, uh, in, I believe it's early '23, early last year, um, there simply weren't any takers. Um, I, I don't know if it just business, you know, business was good and they, no one wanted to take on the project, but for whatever reason, there were, there weren't any interested companies to take the bids. Consequently, what that left us with was a brand-new shiny snow plow that takes up a significant footprint and amount of space, but actually nowhere to put it. And where it currently sits at the airport, when it's not in use, is what we refer to as the community hangar, which is our largest hangar that we have there. And it is sufficient in storing the plow. There's a lot of great space in there, but that hangar is ideally intended for storing aircraft, uh, some transient aircraft, some long-term aircraft. And every day that snow plow is taking up space in our community hangar, it's taking away potential parking space from customers that could be flying into the airport, and we could be making revenue off of parking hangar activities. So it is very vital and important that we do move forward with the expansion project. Uh, earlier this year in January, with the assistance of Prina Newhoff, which is one of our two air, uh, airport consultants, we put together a rebid meeting. So basically, we were trying to get the contractors, subcontractors, and engineers back together to get something rolling on this project. Uh, unfortunately, during that meeting, when we were walking through the area, doing the walk-around and showing the potential, uh, bidders and contractors the area and the scope of the project, it was brought to my attention by members of the airport operations staff that the plan as drawn up was insufficient or less than optimal for the airport, in that the expansion project on paper, while it provided enough space to technically store the plow, did not do so in a way that was most conducive to safety and would facilitate the day-to-day activities at the airport. So what the prior plan called for was the expansion of a single bay, uh, a widening of the roll-up door, and, which would permit, uh, the operator of the plow to back the plow into the building and, and then take it out of the building whenever they needed to use it. Now, this roll-up door is about the, the, the final size, but the final width, uh, as part of the project, and this is not displayed up here, this is the original project. But the final width of the door would be about 27 feet. And then operationally, if you pare that down and you include like safety devices like bollards and different restrictions, it would actually be about 26 feet of operational space. Uh, the plow blade on the front of the plow is 24 feet in width. So what we have is a vehicle that's about 70 feet long, uh, 24 feet wide, 11 feet tall, and we're asking operators to back it into a space that's only 26 feet wide. That leaves about a foot of space on either side of the blade. Now, while that's technically doable, it's not the ideal situation to be in if you're the operator, especially if you have a ton of experience. I mean, you figure most of the time when they're using this plow, it's in less than ideal weather conditions, it might be dark out. And what that then requires you to do is have, uh, from a safety perspective, you'd want to have a second operator there spotting the plow, coming in and out of the building to make sure they didn't have any issues. And also, not all of our operations staff, although they've all received basic training on the plow, not all of them have as much experience with heavy equipment operation. They're not all experts in this. And in the future, we will inevitably see some of our staff come and go, and the people that we take on will receive the same level of basic training, but they might not be the most experienced operators. So the potential for an accident to occur, uh, to potentially occur in the future as a result of this restrictive space is there. And in, in the opinion of the airport board and myself, after reviewing it, looking at it with the engineers and subcontractors, we found it, you know, unnecessary. We were trying to find a better solution to it. The other half of the problem with this expansion project as it's currently written or proposed is the space that the plow would occupy is currently occupied by other heavy equipment in use at the airport. And the, the solution in the plan that's currently adopted is to take that existing heavy equipment, remove it from the bay that would house the plow, and move it to the opposite side of the building, which is the maintenance bay, which has two large lifts like you might see in a, a car garage or a jiffy lube or something like that. And there's all sorts of tools and equipment over there. The airport staff use that workspace to maintain, repair, um, airport equipment. So what we would then have to do is take all the existing equipment in the one bay, move it over to that bay, stack that bay, and what that would mean is every time the airport staff, the operations staff, would want to repair a vehicle, change oil in a truck, they would have to take all that equipment out of the bay, forklifts and trucks, and park it somewhere else, then bring whatever piece of equipment they wanted to work on into the bay, and once they're done with the job, move all the heavy equipment back into the bay. And you could see how this would add hours, needless hours, and the potential for a work-related accident just because of all the moving parts. So what we're looking at is really less than an optimal design. Uh, when I brought this to the attention of the airport board, um, we had decided that the best course of action based upon the recommendations of the engineers, the subconsultants, the consultants, the operations staff, nearby airport managers, and just, you know, any subject matter expert I can find in this area, um, was to explore the potential or the idea of an alternate design. And that's exactly what we did. The airport board, uh, vote, voted to spend $2,200 of airport money, um, from our revenue streams to, uh, commission a redesign proposal. And that is what is included in, um, your board packets as part of this, this letter that I wrote. And out of that redesigned proposal, out of that redesigned study, we came up with, or I should say, rather, the engineers came up with two alternatives for us. Um, the, one of the alternatives, which on page two of this packet is referred to as design item two, we deemed to be cost prohibitive because there was only the most minimal of physical and operational returns on the investment. We would basically gain an additional 12 to 24 inches of width on that roll-up door at an estimated cost of $55,000. So we thought $55,000 was a bit much for a, an additional foot of space. Um, the second design idea, though, or which is the first one listed in the packet, seemed to be much more appealing and, uh, much more efficient and much more safe, although it's a much bolder departure from the original design. Um, this design is what you see before you up on, on the projector. Um, what this design calls for is, instead of expanding the east bay of the operations building, we are instead proposing to expand the west bay further westward. To accomplish this, we would have to demolish and relocate an adjacent sand storage building further to the west, then expand the west bay. But by doing so, on the west bay, the west bay is already configured with a pull-through style door system. There are doors on both sides, the north and the south side of the building. So in addition to getting an expanded bay, we also have a pull-through style bay, which eliminates two major problems with maneuvering the plow. One, that the operators no longer have to back it in and out of an area. And two, it provides, uh, a greater width, more space. So it greatly improves, improves efficiency and safety. Um, the red oval that you see there would be more pavement that we would want to lay down at the airport. This would be kind of an access loop for the plow so that it could proceed, um, on the air side and out the ground side of airport property. This would cross a fence line to the south where we would have to install an automated rolling gate that would be built to dimensions that would accommodate the plow. So this is a much larger project, both in terms of, uh, physical foot, uh, floor space, the footprint it's going to take up, and more importantly, it's also a larger project in cost. The original estimated cost of the initial project was, looking at the report here, I believe it was about $750,000. And when I use these numbers and I'm talking about $750,000, these are federally funded projects, which means that the federal government, these are, these are grant-eligible projects. The federal government is spending this money for us. Um, 95% of the total project cost comes from the federal government. The airport is only responsible for providing the remaining 5%. And out of that 5%, uh, we will then be reimbursed an additional 2.5%. So at the end of the day, the airport is actually only, um, spending 2.5% of the overall project cost. But as I mentioned, the original project cost was an estimated $892,000, and that's on enclosure three of that report. The new project cost would be approximately $1.8 million, which means that the airport would essentially be responsible for 5% of that, or $90,000. Now, again, that $90,000 that we'd be paying upfront, we would be reimbursed, uh, half of that, uh, near the end of the project from the federal government. Uh, and later on, we would be able to utilize our passenger facility charge account to reimburse the remaining amount. So essentially, we would see all that money eventually filter back to the airport, but we would have to provide that $90,000, um, as part of the project. Now, the project, of course, also does not come without some, uh, potential, uh, hiccups or problems that we could encounter down the road. We, I've spoken with the FAA Airport District's office, and they have determined that the redesigned proposal that you have in front of you, this project that we have up here on the wall, would be a grant-eligible project, meaning that the federal government would be willing to spend money on this project and pay for the majority of the project, the 95%. However, as the project is currently designed right now, there are no guarantees that as we move forward with the process, and there is a long process for all these federal grants. There's a pre-application process, an application process, eventually to sign a project number and it gets a grant number. Uh, but at any point in time, as we progress through this, engineers or those policymakers in the FAA, FAA could come back and say, "Well, we understand you want this particular feature, but, you know, we can't accommodate yours, so we may have to adjust it. We may have to alter things." There is that potential. Also, in order for us to do this, and this is the, the most difficult, um, the most, I guess, the most difficult part of the whole thing to kind of wrap my hands around, is we have the current project in place right now. And as is the case with other federal projects of this nature, it's designed in phases. There's a planning phase, a design phase, and a construction phase. The, the money has, the federal money, has already been allocated for the current project, which we have deemed insufficient or less than optimal, I should say, at the airport. And that design money is about $60,000. The airport has already paid approximately $15,000 of this is design money. If we were to move forward with the current project unchanged, we would eventually get this money reimbursed to us, and we would use that money to pay the consultant, the design fee for the project. But in order for us to move forward with the redesign and abandon the current project, the airport would have to absorb the complete cost of the remaining $45,000. Um, I would say the airport would have to absorb the complete cost of $60,000. That's because the FAA will not pay, essentially for lack of a better term, they won't pay for a do-over. They're not going to pay for another design process on the same project. We would have to strip those grant monies out of the current project, the $60,000, the airport would have to pay the $60,000. The current project would then be closed, and that would allow us the latitude and flexibility to move forward next year with putting, uh, this new redesign as a new project on our schedule. Um, but it leaves us with, um, a, a series of, you know, alternatives that we have to make some hard decisions about. And our choices, what are our three choices at this point? Well, we can move forward with the current project and get reimbursed the complete cost of the project down the road, as is the case with other federal projects, knowing that it's a less than optimal design and it could potentially result in accidents or trouble down the road and, and, and problems with our workflows and efficiency at the airport. We could pay the $60,000 and do nothing and just leave the building as it sits right now and get nothing back for it and continue to store the plow in our community hangar. Or we could pay the $60,000 and move forward with a new project as part of our five-year plan, uh, starting in FY '25. And it is the recommendation of myself and the airport board that we close out the current grant project, that the airport pays the $60,000, which we are positioned to do that. That is not necessarily taxpayer money. That is money that was generated as revenue at the airport. But to pay that $60,000, close out the current grant project, and move on with a new project, under the understanding and knowledge that the project, as we are proposing it right now, may not end up as we are currently proposing it, as we envision it, because there could be potential changes down the road.
Does anybody have any questions?
This was supported at finance.
This was supported at finance?
Okay.
To go to the full board.
I had one for, for yourself, sir. The one thing that didn't mention that was in the airport board is the sand building that's going to have to get taken down as a result of this. That's within four or five years of having to be replaced anyway. So now you're able to roll something that's going to have to be replaced here in the short term into that larger project already.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good point. Thank you for mentioning that. Um, it will have to get replaced within five, seven years, is what they're projecting. And we would, in, in demolishing and relocating that building, we would, we would also start in parallel, but, you know, separate but parallel project. The cost of that project, however, is rolled into the $1.8 million that's projected here. Um, so it'd actually be two projects. But yes, that is correct.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I get clarity on, um, are we looking forward to making a different workshop, too, along with this project on there, potentially in the future? Because you said right now that all the storage of the equipment, if we did it the other way, you'd be moving stuff in and out, safety hazard, and I, I hope that's kind of on the table, looking at that process or not.
Yes, that, that's correct. That, this, the, the redesign, as we propose it, would remedy both of those issues. It would allow us sufficient space to store the plow. It would make it much safer, more efficient, as well as, uh, it would prevent us from having to relocate heavy equipment back and forth. It would have a sufficient size of workspace to do their work every day.
And there's insight of looking even further down the road to make sure that something, some other potential issues could be solved at the same time as this? I mean, that's all included in there, too, correct?
Correct. Increasing our footprint by this magnitude, uh, by deviating from the original plan so much opens up a lot, a greater amount of flexibility for future planning at the airport as well.
Thank you.
Any more questions? We will look for a motion to accept.
Well, I'll move there. We, what is it, terminate the original project at a cost of $60,000 and, uh, move forward with the, uh, correct me on the, the right language, with the new project at 1.8 million approximately?
Yes.
Of, of the, uh, uh, snow removal equipment building plus the other things?
The.
Did I cover everything?
Yes.
I mean, you, you spoke a lot. There was a lot, a lot there.
It would be stripping the $60,000 out of the current, the original grant.
Yep.
So that we could close that grant and that project, which would then allow us to move forward with the new project or the redesign of the, the, the snow removal equipment building expansion project as we envision it.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a support?
I'll support.
Need a real call on this because we're spending money, or?
It can't hurt.
Okay.
You're not actually spending the money, but your employee was spending it.
Yes.
Well, the big, the biggest thing I'm looking at, we're trusting the airport authority board. Your, your background on, uh, what we need, the federal government supporting it, uh, not costing the taxpayers a lot of money, and looking forward to, uh, a lot of new things happening at the airport that'll make it safer. So I, I think it's a good win situation for everybody that likes to fly. Come, come fly to Delta Coliseum.
Okay, you?
Yes.
Crowsdale?
Yes.
Stankenhoven?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Ann Milner?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to number seven. Airport MEAT Hunt Title VI and Community Participation Plan.
Yes. So Title VI in the CPP is a program, or are programs, that stem from the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Disadvantaged Business Enterprise, DVE. Um, it's been a fixture for quite a long time, uh, within aviation and the airport, aviation industry and airports. Any, um, any business, uh, including airports, that receive federally obligated, or federal dollars, grant dollars, or, or exist on federally obligated land, which describes our airport, are required to conform to Title VI. However, up until recently, this level of Title VI compliance, this robust type of compliance, has not been a factor at airports of our size. Uh, it was only recently, this year, that the FAA has rolled this out, um, at the behest of, uh, the current administration to enhance Title VI programs at airports of our size. And essentially, what this boils down to is, in order for our airport to continue receiving federal dollars and federal grants, we must comply to the new features of this program, which are quite extensive and comprehensive. Um, the proposal, there is an appendix in the proposal for this, which describes the scope of work that would be performed in order to stand this program up, and it is quite lengthy. And without going through it line by line, essentially what we at the airport will have to do to remain in compliance with this, this new fixture, this new type of program, is we are going to have to be very cognizant and aware of our surrounding communities. Anything that involves construction will have to be brought to the public eye for public scrutiny to make sure that we are not, um, adversely impacting any disadvantaged or marginalized communities. We want to make sure that, uh, according to the stipulations behind Title VI and CPP, everyone has an active voice in decisions for construction that are going in and around the airport. Um, and that's going to involve a lot of canvassing, a lot of demographic research. And that's going to involve a lot of canvassing, a lot of demographic research. It involves small things that seem as innocuous and minor as posting a sign in the airport that identifies me as the program manager in Spanish and English, to, for bilingual reasons, of course, to, when you go into the airport, and we have a public Wi-Fi system, to putting a disclaimer down there to make it debatable in Spanish as well as English, just as examples. There are many more in-depth aspects of this, but the bottom line and the big takeaway is that if we don't have this done, or if we don't have this program stood up, which, after conducting a study, takes approximately 158 to 170 hours of work, and that's labor hours. If we don't have this program put in place and up and running by September 30th, and as of October 1st, we're not going to be eligible for federal dollars, and we're not going to be able to continue on with our five-year plan. Now, if it seems to you, if it appears that I'm coming to you at the last minute, and we're kind of reeling backwards and we're on our heels with this, we are. But it's not just our airport that's in this situation. It's the entire state. Matter of fact, it's many states across the nation that are experiencing the same thing. This rollout for our-size airports came out very rapidly this year and without little fanfare notification. It's something that has been kind of thrust upon Part 139 airports, non-hub airports, non-hub airports and smaller airports. And consequently, what that's resulted in is our consultants, airport management, commercial air carriers, everyone that's a stakeholder in this, really scrambling, more or less at the last minute, to get these projects put together and stood up. So the entire point of this proposal is, we are asking our airport consultant, who has a wide network and web of subject matter experts and professionals that know a lot of great stuff about this, in exchange for a lump sum payment of $33,763, which is fully reimbursable through the federal government, because this is a federally mandated program, we are asking them to assist us in standing up this program as quickly as possible. So essentially, they would be providing many consultant services, administrative consultant services, basically working on putting together these large binders, these checklists, putting together the signage that was put in the airport, sending people out to the community to examine demographic information within five miles of the airport, so we can put together different reports and requirements that will be needed to comply with this program. If we're left to do this on our own at the airport, we could certainly do it and accomplish it, but it would probably take us double or triple the time, because we lack, when I say "we," Airport Administration, Airport Management, we lack the subject matter expertise in this particular program to get it done in a timely manner, which is why we're asking for assistance.
Mr. Chair, can I ask him the question?
Sure.
Is this a one-time thing, or is this something that's going to cost the county money every year to update this, or to follow through with this, to file the papers, or is this something you can do in-house after the consultant's help, or? I mean, there's 45 pages here. I did skim through a lot of it. It's very detail-ish, and almost like we're a huge airport now, and we have to follow, like, we are in O'Hara Airport or something, you know? It just seems counterproductive for small communities to have this much piled on them so quick and so fast, when, I mean, it's just my opinion, you know, so.
And you're echoing the comments, there's many people within the aviation industry field the exact same way. Unfortunately, it is what it is. But yes, to answer your question, it would be a one-time payment, and to stand up the project, or the program, rather. And once the program's established, it's something that we would be able to maintain internal to the airport, just like any other federally mandated program that we have to do.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I just have one. Echoing what Commissioner View said, you said because this is federally mandated that we do receive, we will receive reimbursement for this, correct?
That's correct. We are reimbursed.
So it's not like it's going to cost us?
And typically, the reimbursement process, as it works with all these federal grants, initially, near the end of the project, we will get 95% of the money, which we then pay to the vendors, the third-party contractors, whoever's doing the work, or in this case, it would be the consultant. The remaining 5% is then reimbursed as we approach the closeout of the grant.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any more questions for the manager?
I'll move that we approve the compensation for services to $33,763 for the consultant, for our airport manager to follow this title, what is this called again?
Title VI.
Title VI.
Title VI mandate on our airport.
Support.
We have a motion, we have support. Any more discussion?
One comment. Even though we get federal dollars and that, I have a feeling that a lot of these federal dollars are still paid by the taxpayers in the community and all over the place. It's just another way to make us spend money. I mean, I just, I just, I think of that in the back of my head. I just wanted to reiterate that, that it's still costing taxpayers.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose?
Do we need a roll call on that?
Yeah, we need a roll call.
Okay.
Okay, View.
Yes.
Crowsdale.
Yes.
Stangenhoven.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Melner.
Yes.
Okay, let's see here. Now, we move on to number eight, Mead Hunt, Complete Airport Security Plan.
Yes, so this is a, another proposal from our airport consultant. It's a different section, different division of the consulting company that we are seeking assistance from. In this case, it's the security section. Our airport, like many other airports around the country, has to adhere to security directives as out-led by the TSA, the Transportation Security Administration. And those requirements of very broad terms require our airport to have what's called a living document, so to speak, that guides us in what we need to do. That's called the Airport Security Plan, or the ASP, and an airport security coordinator, which is myself, and an alternate, which is Assistant Manager, Robin Morrison. In that ASP, as it sits right now, we are, we have what is referred to as a partial Class IV program, which is the least restrictive and least demanding of all the programs for our type airport. And the classification of the program is generally based upon the size of the jet suite service. And when I say "size," I refer to the passenger capacity of the jet suite service, as well as the origin of the jet suite service. So any aircraft that have 60 or fewer passengers require a lesser security plan. Any aircraft that have 61 passengers or greater require a greater security program. Additionally, any, if we have international flights, we're receiving those that require a greater security program as well. As it sits right now, the aircraft, the commercial aircraft, the SkyWest aircraft that we receive at the airport on a regular basis, that we service, the operations that we have, our security program, as it sits, the base security program, does not accommodate that. We would not be able to accept and service those aircraft unless we had an amendment to the security program, which is called an AMOC. It's an acronym that stands for Alternative Method of Compliance. And basically, what that allows us to do, it's approved through the TSA, it permits us, it permits a small section of our airport to operate at a higher security posture and capacity than what we would normally enjoy, or what we would normally have, rather. So that, in turn, allows us to receive these larger-capacity aircraft from SkyWest. Now, in the past, these narrow-body aircraft, I'm sure you all are familiar with, where they have the single seats on the side, they've been smaller-capacity aircraft or smaller-passenger aircraft. But there's been a general move in the industry overall to increase the size of these narrow-body aircraft, which essentially is more cost-effective for the airlines. So what we've seen over the years is, we used to have, for example, at this airport, the Bombardier CRJ-200, which was a smaller-capacity aircraft, and that has since been replaced by the CRJ-700 and the CRJ-900, which is what SkyWest uses. They have a larger passenger capacity airframe. And that then requires us to go out and request this AMOC or this special agreement. Now, the AMOC is a non-renewable, non-extendable, one-time agreement that is designed to be set in place to kind of act as a bridge, so to speak, which will permit airports at the time to basically elevate themselves from one security posture to another, which requires a revision of this ASP and a lot of different changes at the airport. We've been operating under this AMOC for many months now, since before I ran the airport, and it was originally supposed to expire next month. Delta SkyWest had promised the airport essentially a workaround for us. We originally would not have had to raise our security posture or pursue a full program, because they were going to put a plane in service called the CRJ-550, which is the same size as the 700s and the 900s, the same basic physical size. But the internal cabin is configured in such a way that you have a first-class cabin, and then you have the seats that follow, which lowers the overall internal passenger capacity. So in doing that, although the plane holds less people, less passengers, it makes it less restrictive for us from a security standpoint. And we wouldn't need to operate under an AMOC, and it could expire in July, and we could just go about our business. Unfortunately, there are a lot of material restrictions and some other items that I'm not entirely privy to, some factors that present, prevented SkyWest from putting this new aircraft in service at our airport, as well as some neighboring airports. So that put our airport, as well as a couple of our neighbors, in a predicament where our AMOC, our temporary agreement, was about to expire, but the aircraft that we were servicing at the airport exceeded our base-level security posture. And if that were to happen, we wouldn't be able to accept passenger jets at Delta County Airport. The passenger service would stop, commercial passenger service, until we could find a type aircraft that we could accommodate with our current security program. The good news is TSA and Delta SkyWest worked together very quickly, and kind of a once-in-a-lifetime sort of thing, they did extend this AMOC, which is unheard of and has never been done before, and it will not be done again. But the new due date for our AMOC is first of January of next year. So we have all the way until January of next year. And SkyWest has promised us that they're going to have the CRJ-550 in service before then. So we really shouldn't have to worry about any security requirements or any issues. But that's left the Airport Board and myself wondering, well, what if something beyond SkyWest's control happens in the near future, where although they promised us they can get this airport, this airplane in service, they can't? And we find ourselves in a similar situation come October, November, December, later this year, where our AMOC is about to expire, and we know beyond a shadow of doubt it's not going to be extended again, and we're facing the probability of not having an aircraft in service that we can support at our airport. Where does that leave us without commercial air service? So what the Airport Board and I are proposing, and what the Airport Board has very adamantly set me about the task of doing since I started from day one, is to elevate our security posture, to raise our airport security program, which is a pretty intensive undertaking. In addition to all the administrative requirements that would have to go into the ASP and revising that, there's a number of infrastructure improvements we'd have to put in place at the airport, and these include items like improved closed-circuit television camera coverage, electronic access controls on doors that lead out to the different areas of the airport, a badging system where we would do criminal background investigation checks of airport employees and people who routinely visit the airport. It basically just increases the posture altogether. But if we do this, if we were to upgrade our security posture to the next level, the full level, which is referred to as a Category III or Cat III level, it would permit Delta County Airport the latitude to service any of these aircraft of any configuration or any size for the foreseeable future. So if SkyWest were to come back to us in the future and say, "Look, we promised you the 550, and we did our best, but this happened, it was beyond our control," we wouldn't have to worry about an interruption in service. We could service the next larger aircraft. Additionally, if the airport desires to shop around with different air carriers in the future, and they want to, we want to be more competitive with our essential air service contracts, it gives us the latitude and flexibility to work with different air carriers and negotiate, because not all air carriers may utilize passenger jets that meet our particular needs at our airport. So it just makes sense for us, in the long term, to adopt a higher security posture, an elevated security posture, permanently, so we have more flexibility in the type of aircraft that we receive and service at Delta County Airport. Of course, none of this will come without a price tag. The consultant fee in this case is a lump sum payment of $37,616. And what do we get in return for that? Well, we get subject matter experts, again, who can help us pursue this in a very aggressive and timely manner. Unlike the prior recommendation with Title VI program, we're not on a short deadline for this. There is no mandate. We don't have to have this done by the beginning of next year, but if we don't have it done and our AMOC expires, we kind of leave ourselves vulnerable to the powers that be, or any sort of factors that might affect what kind of aircraft eventually make their way to our airport. So we do want to try to get this done as quickly as possible, and we would like the backing of people who have the expertise to get it done correctly. So the $37,616 would allow us to interact with these consultants, who would then, in turn, help us develop a more robust administrative program, including the badging system or anything like that. They would not physically be working at the airport. They would be guiding us in our duties and providing us the source documents and working with the TSA to get a program in place that we could utilize. Once that program is in place, and once it's been approved by the TSA, then we would physically have to make changes at the airport to come in line with that program. And that would be at an additional estimated cost of about $65,000 to $75,000 over the next 10 to 14 months. And this would include the infrastructure that I mentioned, the routing of wires, the routing of cables, putting in televisions, putting in new locks, adopting a new badging system, adjusting some of our gating procedures, things of that nature. So those are all very costly things. And unlike the mandated programs, which I spoke about earlier, this is not mandated. We do not need to elevate our security posture. This is a decision that we have to make. Because it is not mandated, none of this money would be reimbursable. But the airport is in a position, with the money that we have on hand and the revenue that we generate, to, you know, absorb the cost of this over time. It would not break the airport, so to speak, it wouldn't break our bank. But it would, of course, put, you know, a greater burden. We would be using some taxpayer, tax revenue, and we would be using some airport revenue as well.
Anybody have any questions?
A quick one. Do we have background checks now?
We do not have.
You don't?
We do not have criminal background investigation checks to the level that this program would call for or require. So our ramp observers, for example, are county employees, they have criminal background investigation checks, the SkyWest employees have those. But all the individuals who, for instance, privately rent hangars at the airport, are private pilots, they don't require criminal background checks. They would require to be involved in this badging system if we were to adopt this.
Okay, one more comment, too, is that all the records are going to be kept with the consultants. Are we, I mean, they're going to allow us to have copies and everything, but are we, they're only going to keep them for three years, and if we need them for future years, are we going to be able to have manuals or electronic copies of them that'll be for us to maintain or look at for future?
Yes, they will completely turn over all the documents and all the records to us once the program is stood up, and it will be our responsibility to maintain the program in accordance with TSA regulations.
Okay, and Mead and Hunt's going to put this proposal out for the, for what needs to be done, or are they going to be the consultants that's going to run with this? Because I see, what's this JW group, which is half of the cost for the consultants to do this?
The JW group is a...
Subcontractor.
A subcontractor. There are several subcontractors involved. The JW group, I believe, is one of the groups in particular that handles the criminal background investigation check portion of it. They outsource that. So that's their entire business. And then the Mead and Hunt would basically, you know, they would, they would look at our existing document, our existing program, and say, well, you know, X, Y, and Z needs to fall into place here. We need to make these changes in this section, this subsection, this is what we're going to have to do. We revise it, we put it together, and then they help us with kind of a roadmap to physically implement this at the airport. We will be the ones doing, when I say "we," Airport Administration, the airport employees, will be the ones on the ground doing the physical work, implementing everything, but they'll be guiding us and assisting us along the way.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for the manager? Hearing none. I need a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the Complete Airport Security Plan proposal.
I need support.
Support.
All in favor?
It's a money issue.
Discussion.
I guess one of the things, when the Airport Board looked at this, yes, there's a price tag in both parts of it. Everybody knows this time goes on, security's getting more. We ran into, if I remember correctly, previously with one of the airlines promising a specific aircraft, then couldn't deliver. So my faith in them being able to say, "Yep, we'll have you this new one here in a couple months," you know, that, they're trusting them, they kind of, they kind of lost that of them being able to say they're definitely going to have this. We're talking about wanting economic growth, you're going to do it with an airport or a seaport. This would allow for even larger planes in the future. I mean, this is part of that future planning.
And the decision is, we plan on having a huge airport, bigger airport, for bigger planes, and all that's feasible in the near future?
Well, we do plan on having a larger airport, but in all honesty, this particular proposal, making this, this specific move, is really, it's basically keeping pace with the industry, so to speak. It's not so much a broad jump, in my opinion. It's really keeping pace with the industry trend, which is these, the adoption of these narrow-body, large-passenger-capacity jets that all the airline industries seem to be gravitating towards. My fear is if we don't go down this road, if we, if we don't, whether, whether or not we accept this proposal, if we don't improve our security posture, that, if that involves a consultant doing it at an accelerated timetable, so we're done by the end of this year, or early next year, or if it's myself and the assistant manager working on it and takes us the next two years, if we don't do anything, I feel that we'll fall behind, and my concern is that we're going to find ourselves in a predicament one day, where we're, we're not going to be able to provide or service the type of aircraft that are, that are at our disposal, and we won't be able to provide commercial air carrier service. our disposal and we won't be able to provide commercial air carrier service.
Any more discussion?
View.
Yes.
Crossdale.
Yes.
Van Genhoven.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Anne Melner.
Yes.
Okay, number nine. Two more.
Abby Schmidt Group Liquidation Damage Settlement.
So earlier I had mentioned and spoke about the grant, the snow removal equipment grant, where one half of it involved a plow, the other half involved a building expansion project. And if you recall, I mentioned that although the plow is a very efficient and wonderful machine and we're happy to have it, there were some delays in receiving it due to the paperwork that the company had to put together and the FAA regulations behind that. As a condition of the grant, because the plow was delivered approximately six months late, the federal government mandates that the company who delivered it late must provide the airport liquidated damages. However, as part of the conditions of the grant, it cannot be a cash exchange because the monies, the grant monies have already changed hands. And if you'd like me to explain the specific details of how that works, I can't. I'll be honest. It's a very confusing and very complex system. Even the people who work at the ground level with it at the FAA, I went to an FAA workshop last month in Traverse City, which is very informative and educational. But even the people that work with it every day claim that it's very confusing and very elaborate. Regardless, it's not as simple as the company cutting us a check for the amount of money that is owed, the liquidated damages. There's also an arithmetic that goes behind this that the federal government figures out and says basically, which states, for X number of days that this plow was delivered late, you owe a certain number of dollars per day. And what it comes out to for us is $128,000 is what the contract stipulates, is they owe $128,000. The catch, however, is that the airport would have to clearly illustrate that we suffered $128,000 in damages. And although the plow was delivered late, it did not cost the airport $128,000 in losses. There are other airports around the region and the country who were impacted by this who did suffer losses and damages because their fields closed, their runways closed, they didn't have sufficient equipment, or they had to go out and rent equipment, so they had to pay money for it. We were not stuck in that situation because we have other snow removal equipment and we have a wonderful crew over there who does a great job and they got by with the equipment on hand. So based upon the inputs and suggestions of one of our other consultants and some other airport managers, I started negotiations with the company. And those negotiations took place over the course of several months. And this proposal letter that's in front of you is the outcome of those negotiations. The total proposed compensation, the sediment value for the liquidated damages that Abby Schmidt is proposing for us, to us, to award to the airport, is a total of $87,684.70. And the way that's broken down is first, they're going to credit our account with the company $25,917.70. This includes reimbursement for materials, labor, and services that we have already purchased for the plow for after factory items that were not shipped with the plow as part of the standard package that we identify later as having to need. Also, a warranty item and some maintenance issues. But they're going to credit our counter, basically reimburse us for what we've spent in that area. The other amount is they're going to additionally credit us for an additional $11,219.04 for other parts and services that we currently have on order but have not yet paid for. These include the replacement of consumable items like the brush roller that needs to be replaced about once every season. Again, it's a very expensive, large piece of equipment. It's about $880,000. So the maintenance involved on it and the parts are also very expensive. So that's why there's such large numbers here. They also are going to apply us an additional credit of $4,698.66 for a wafer refill kit, which is another consumable item. And then finally, they're just going to provide us with a $10,000 credit for whatever we determine we might need to use in the future, whether that's, you know, additional parts that might come down the line, replacement parts, labor, et cetera, things of that nature. The bulk of this settlement, however, comes out of the extended warranty. They're offering, right now we have a one-year warranty on the vehicle. They're offering to extend it for an additional two years for a total of three years. And that number is basically based upon the total cost of the plow. So the two-year extended warranty package is valued at about $61,767, which is 7% of the total purchase price of $882,384. So again, that brings us to $87,684, which is well over half of what the arithmetic called for. Our options at this point are to accept this settlement, which in the opinions of everyone I've spoke to, people are well versed in this sort of thing. They think it's entirely fair. We can accept the settlement as it's proposed here. We can offer another counter, which I've already countered four times. This is the culmination of four counters. Or we could attempt to pursue legal recourse if we wanted to go litigation and try to go after the entire $128,000. But I've been told by, again, people who are very close to this and are knowledgeable with it, the likelihood of the airport recovering, or I should say, receiving, being awarded $128,000 liquidated damages is very slim because we just simply can't illustrate that we suffered that sort of loss.
Any questions?
I'll move that we signed liquidated damage settlement proposals totaling compensation settlement value of $87,684.70 with Abby Schmidt in group.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I just want to make the comment, thanks for getting us to this figure. Four times and still getting almost three quarters of what we had is real good in my mind.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I will say on behalf of the company, it was not a very, it wasn't entirely confrontational. They were very understanding. It was very cordial, very professional. And the people that we've worked with who routinely come over to service the plow and the individuals I've spoken with who are phone and email, they've been very accommodating. They realize that this was their fault internal to the company and they want to make it right. So we do look forward to having a productive and mutual relationship with them in the future.
We have a motion. We've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Okay, number 10. Airport Lease Company.
Wow. We should have had just a meeting for the airport.
It was a long meeting.
So this particular agreement, this amendment that you have in front of you, again, this is a culmination of several months of work. As everyone knows, we have Enterprise Rent a Car who occupies a space in the airport. And not only do they serve as the rental car service for the airport, but they also serve as rental car service for the greater community. They have an existing concession agreement, or a rental agreement, you could say, with the airport, that was dated back in 2018. And it extends, it goes for terms of five years essentially. As part of that original agreement signed on November 1st, 2018, they were permitted three renewable terms of five years each. They could execute these three renewable terms. They have already executed one of these five-year renewable terms. The current agreement thus expires October this year. What they are desiring to do, what Enterprise is desiring to do, is to execute the second five-year term, which of course would take us out to 2029. The amendment that you see before you, the reason why it's kind of lengthy is because when I started looking into this concession agreement, as well as other land use and rental agreements at the airport, some of the documents were incomplete. They were missing certain pages and the verbiage or the wording was kind of ambiguous. So what the Enterprise representative did, what we worked together with, is crafting this amendment that not only sets forth the terms of the extension, the second five-year extension, but also clarifies the terms of the original agreement. And it's kind of like a roadmap. Because when you try to read the original agreement and the supplementary agreements back to back, there's, again, there's some ambiguity there and it makes it confusing. But essentially, the airport receives three sources of income from Enterprise. We receive a monthly rental payment, which they, of course, pay to occupy the space in the airport. As part of the concession agreement, we receive 9% of their gross revenue as well, which is also what this agreement calls for. And the third and final one is we receive a customer facility charge, which is a $3.50 charge that is assessed per customer, per car, per day for no more than seven days. And that money is placed in a special account at the airport and is restricted in its use. It's only used to make improvements or repair areas for Enterprise. So if the car wash breaks or if they get a hole in the drywall, that's what that money's set aside for. And all this agreement does is extend it out for another five years to 2029. It essentially changes nothing of our existing agreement. And then, of course, we have the one remaining five-year term on the back end, which we can address down the road.
Do we have any questions?
One comment, if you could. What's the revenue generated, just ballpark about yearly? I mean, just, you know, is it 1,000 or is it 100,000?
Well, very seasonally. I would say we probably receive somewhere in the neighborhood of about $40,000 in the concession agreement per year.
So it is, it brings in a little bit of money for our county and the airport.
It's pretty significant. And the other benefit is that not all customers, Enterprise customers, are necessarily passengers at the airport because it serves the greater community. So we do receive, for lack of better terms, some passive income from people who are coming from different parts of the U.P. or the surrounding area to rent cars.
Good, I like it.
So on that, I need a motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt the Enterprise Lease Company Lease Concession Agreement and the amended proposal.
I need support.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Mr. Enso.
Yes, thank you.
I may be back for item number 12, we'll see.
Okay, number 11. Delta Conservation District Presentation of Past Current and Upcoming Projects.
I'm honored to be here and thankful that you guys asked me to come and to have the district up here and to work on building a, building back a relationship with the district, which I feel is important and necessary and powerful to work with the community and have you guys by our side. So thank you for that. I'm a little nervous. I don't usually come up and speak, so I apologize for that as well. My name is Heather Laduke. I am the new district manager at the Delta Conservation District. And just wanted to give a little bit of a background on who I am. I graduated from Northern Michigan University with environmental conservation degree with also minors in conservation biology and Native American studies. So I worked with the tribes and the federal government at Gliffwick for 13 years as a conservation officer. And when I moved to Eskenaba, I did work with the district from 2020 to 2022, but was stationed at the park. So that's, you know, most of the experience I got then was with the awesome parks of Delta County. And I remember when I did an internship, I've done many, you know, with fish and wildlife, coming to Eskenaba to market and working on piping plover that was, you know, special here with the birds there, endangered birds that nest here. So I was really impressed with the Eskenaba community at that time. And I'd also learned the initial name, Eskenaba, I mean Flat Rock or land of the red buck is how they told me to say buck like that. So, but very impressed with the community. I've been here now six years and I felt very welcome. And I think it's a beautiful place. I just wanted to mention that. So thank you. That's just a little bit about me. I did leave in 2022 because my love was conservation and I wanted to do more of that. And ended up going to Billerude, which is something I did not expect to happen. But I got great experience there in the HR department with administration, so I think that really helped me, too. And great people at the Billerude, which I know there's Billerude people everywhere. So I've met a lot of people in this community from working there. But one thing I just, I wanted to kind of share with you all is, you know, some, because you guys, a lot of you are new, and my board is new, and I'm new in the position to kind of go over very briefly what the conservation districts do in their community. And I'm still learning to. But basically, the support services and that, you know, we are here for the community and to support and protect and better, not only, you know, a big chunk of the district is to work with private landowners in technical assistance or programs like MEAT that provide legal protections and verifications that show that they're doing sustainable, sustainable and responsible agricultural practices. And then also, we have conservation stewardship programs and qualified forests and all these programs. We work with the state and NRCS to Natural Resource Conservation Service, sorry for acronyms, but to basically support private landowners that maybe can get financial services or tax breaks and things like that. So that's a big part of the district. But we also have this chunk where obviously we work for the community and, you know, holding hands with the community on what's important to them. So as I'm learning what's important to the community and what we should focus on, I did put, I wanted to hear what you guys felt that we can do for the community members. And maybe you've heard more than we've heard. I do have the five-year plan that was developed by the Conservation District in 2023, which is our fiscal year 2024. So basically, right before I came on. And so we're trying to live and breathe, you know, this plan. But I've also heard through this that there's other things that weren't included. So we start with this plan by doing a natural resource assessment and asking the community, what do you care about and what do you want us to focus on and care about? And so I see that these priorities listed here that is in your packet is, you know, wildlife and forestry, which we have of all the land base that we have, you know, like I think about half of it is forested land in Delta County. Agriculture is number two. And then the soil erosion, obviously, and the wetland identification assistance, and then water quality and invasive species. As I've been talking to people and getting to know people, I've also heard so many other things that the community is really interested in. So I guess I'm up here really to let you guys all know and women that we are working with you guys in whatever capacity that you feel is important. We want to make sure that we echo what the community is wanting us to do. And I know you guys talk to a lot more people than we probably do right now. But we will be probably revisiting the natural resource assessment. We don't have to do it every year, but it's something that we probably will get in the practice of doing it because things change. And I've heard people come up to me and say they're into, they're concerned about the climate change or watersheds, you know, because we're in one of the largest watersheds in the U.P. with the Eskenaba. And so there's just so much in there. I just listed a bunch of things. Pollinators are, you know, a buzz right now, but they are so important to keep our places wild and special around here. And so as far as soil erosion, a lot of districts do soil erosion for their county. I know that you guys have somebody in place doing it right now. But if it does become big and you need help, we can step in and provide backup for that. We can have someone, you know, go get trained or whatever. That is one of the roles of a district. So we are there to support. And then as far as like, you know, the water quality that I've heard, invasive species is a big, big deal, especially, you know, the climate change kind of affects everything or the piping plover, all these things. We have a lot of resources. So I just wanted to put that list out and just extend my gratitude again for being able to actually come up here and share who I am and have you all support the district and then reach out and let us know what you feel that we could be doing and focusing on that will really help the community. And the last thing, too, I want to mention before I forget, because I'm a little nervous, is that we have our annual meeting coming up and I probably will come back closer to that time. But it's August 21st. We invite all of you. We invite all the community. We are doing it at Northern Sun Winery and Vineyards from 3:00 to 7:00. We want to really focus on our local producers. And so they're one of our amazing... And so they're one of our amazing producers. And I haven't even been out there before all of this. I just started Googling, you know, farms and, you know, that's another thing is we're looking at the farmer's market and really bringing some spotlight onto all the great people that we have as producers. So we have U P R, U P R Produce is providing some of their fresh greens because they have a, a program that you can, a C S A can buy into their program and get fresh vegetables all summer and things like that. So we're going to have a presentation, a couple of presentations. We have a band or a fellow named Bill Rennie that's going to be playing. And it's just going to be like super fun. And it's just to celebrate the district and what we can do in the future, you know, together. So that's all I have now. I would appreciate if you all would just email us, email me or reach out and let us know if there's anything that we can focus on that you feel that would be important. So we can direct our attention to that. And that's all I have.
Does anybody have questions for Heather?
I have a comment.
Oh, boy.
Seems like I have a comment every time.
Yes.
I, I'm always trying to get as much transparency for the community. This, this nine-page synopsis of the Conservation District, I wish I had this 17 months ago. This is excellent. I, I really want to commend you on what you brought forward here. It's everything that I think that should have been in my orientation book that I never got. Well, I'm just saying, I'm being a county commissioner. I mean, I, I would love to have a book that has such amount of information that when we had so much controversy before, I would have had some idea on all the stuff going on with the Conservation District. I, I also, where does your budget come from? Where, where do you get your money? I didn't see that in here.
We have to be clever. So we have our tree sale that was well received this year and we did really well on it. And that's a major part of our funding. And then we have grants, like an operations grant from N D R. We have the state, Michigan, state of Michigan. I'm not, we don't know what that looks like. We'll have to see with the governor and, you know, everybody decides this in it. We should know, but, you know, we just, we kind of try to piece things together. So through grants and writing grants of our own, you know, federal dollars and fundraising.
I would have liked to seen some, you know, that in here, a little bit of that, just so we, you know, because I, I look at what you're spending, you know, 150,000 for this and stuff. I'm thinking, where are we getting the money? The county's not supporting any of this, I know for a fact. I mean, we, we, you know, so.
And we do put a budget together and we're getting ready to do our budget for fiscal year 25, which starts October 1st. So that will be public knowledge once we get that. So you can see that.
Okay. And then is this gonna, can this be available somewhere on your line so people can see this? Because this, this is a pretty good synopsis if people want to see what the Conservation District can do and be involved with, with, with the community and the county. So I would recommend that if it can be, that maybe your board can talk about getting this online.
Okay. And we, and we probably will, you know, even do some additions to it.
Right.
We're like, looking at recycling, like pesticides. And we're, there's not programs like that. And I, I go and I look at the other, like Dickinson County and Marquette, and they all have these wonderful programs and they're really working hand in hand with what, you know, the commu, the community wants, what they feel is, is some important things to look at. So we're kind of mining for that right now to see what does everybody want in addition to these that they've already done a, a resource assessment on. And then we'll definitely be moving forward with putting those into practice and writing grants and looking for funding and, and things like that. So, and, and I, I guess I should mention too that I pulled out your master plan from 2019, which is the one that was on your website. But a lot of this in here, it looks like, you know, like this graph right here, this is all forested land, you know. And I, the thing that I noticed in here, if I can get to it, the number one concern for the community context when this was done was to protect and conserve natural resources. It's got the highest rating of, you know, everything developing the lakefront or developing downtown. That was the number one thing, which, you know, that's what makes the U P special. So we definitely want to, we're here to be a service for this kind of stuff. So, so that's it.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that was information. We will move on to number 12. Airport clerk resignation, temp physician.
Yes, our temporary physician for airport clerk has resigned. I'm just looking for a, sending a thank you letter. And then we actually have this on the agenda for June 20th finance. I mean.
I, I don't want to make this a personnel review because I know it's not the venue for it, but I just want to say that the, the lady that we had as our temporary appointment, Alicia Parrott, fantastic person. She met and exceeded the expectations of the physician, did a great job respecting her privacy. I'll just say that she resigned for personal reasons. They weren't work-related, but we, she's a wonderful fit at the airport. We were very satisfied with the level of service and work ethic that she brought to the airport and we were very sad to see her go. So we wish her the best. And also with the agenda items that were on here tonight, everything that the board's looked at and unanimous support that we received. Speaking personally and on behalf of the airport, we do appreciate your support. It's going to go very far away in helping us and improve things at the airport and expand the airport. And as Commissioner View mentioned, yeah, the federal grant dollars, definitely not lost upon us, that it's not a pot of gold. You know, that, that money comes from somewhere, comes from the taxpayer. We are cognizant of that. And we will do our best to be good stewards of that money as much as possible and, and make sure that the community and the county sees returns on their investment.
Move to accept the resignation of the temporary airport clerk, Ms. Parrott, and send a letter of thanks.
I'll second that. Okay. Question on that? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number 13, opioid task force bylaws.
These bylaws have been reviewed and recommended by the opioid task force and I'm looking for approval from the Board of Commissioners.
Need a motion?
I'll, I'll move that the bylaws of the Delta County opioid task force being presented tonight in our packet be approved.
I'll second.
And my comment on that, Mr. Chair, is that it's a living document. If something comes up and we need to change things, we got a, I think an 11-member board of highly dedicated people for controlling drug abuse in the community. And there just may be things added there that'll make us much better.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing done. I need a motion or, I got a motion support?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Okay. We're going to move on to general public comment.
No, we got one other thing.
You have added.
Got that appointment.
Oh, the bylaws.
I mean, excuse me.
Or the Board of Canvases, sorry.
It's just a notice.
It's just a notice, a 30-day appointment.
So at the end of that.
Yeah, it's a 30-day.
Yep.
We don't have to.
It's just down here, notices.
Accept their resignation or anything?
No, we're just adding it to the agenda.
Okay.
Down on the bottom for notices.
Oh, the Board of Camera, Election Canvases? That's, that's just going to be a generic thing in there all the time then? Or is there something going on with that?
No, there's an opening.
30?
Oh, there, someone resign?
It's on, it's in our.
Was it in mine?
It's on.
So do we need anything else on that? Just that there's a 30-day.
Notice.
Notice on that and parks and rec commission. Okay. So then we go back up to general public comment.
Williams, Ford River Township. I want to just talk about the Michigan Trust Fund. The Michigan Trust Fund is a fund of about 15 to 20 million dollars annually. It's revenue from royalties of lease, of, of sale and lease of state owned, state-owned oil, gas and mineral rights. Okay? 15 to 20 million dollars a year. That is available to us as a community at a three-to-one match. So every dollar we spend, we get $3 from the trust fund. So I'm really a bit confused tonight with Mr. Wary's narrative and this board's decision. Because Mr. Wary indicated it would take about six months to put together a five-year rec plan, which is required in order to seek funds from the trust fund. Well, if it's only going to take three months or six months to put together a plan, why would you approve a $75,000 project that in just six months could cost you 25,000? If you just put the plan together and then got the trust fund grant money? So I don't quite understand the logic that I saw take place here tonight. But putting, putting a delay or short, small delay on a $75,000 project appears to me like it could have cost the county, the local taxpayers, a lot less money. So I don't quite understand why we did what we did tonight. And I just wanted to remind everyone where that money comes from, how it works and why the five-year rec plan is so incredibly important. And I do want to just quickly touch on Ms. Laduke. When she was up here and she said that the Conservation District has a five-year plan, I don't want that to be confused. It is not the same as the county's five-year rec plan. It's the Conservation District's five-year plan. So I just didn't want that to be confusing to anyone. Anyhow, that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any more public comment?
Bob Baron, Esconaba Township. I've got a couple of different quotes I want to present tonight. One is going to be chapter two of Book of Proverbs, verses 1 through 11. My son, if thou wilt, thou wilt receive my words and hide my commandments with thee, so that thou incline thy ear unto wisdom and apply thine heart to understanding. Yea, if thou cryest after knowledge and liftest up thy voice for understanding. If thou seekest her as silver and searches for her as for hid treasures, then shalt thou, thou understand the fear of the Lord and find the knowledge of God. For the Lord giveth wisdom; out of his mouth cometh knowledge and understanding. He layeth up sound wisdom for the righteous; he is a buckler to them that walk uprightly. He keepeth the paths of judgment; preserveth the way of his saints. Then shalt thou understand righteousness and judgment and equity. Yea, every good path. When wisdom entereth into thine heart and knowledge is pleasant unto thy soul, discretion shall preserve thee; understanding shall keep thee. Yeah, I have a couple of other quotes here. Men occasionally stumble over the truth, but most of them pick themselves up and hurry off, hurry off as if nothing ever happened. Winston Churchill. Time is the wisest counselor of all. Pyrrhicles. The highest art is always the most religious and the greatest artist is always a devout person. Abraham Lincoln. Wise men speak because they have something to say, fools because they have to say something. Plato. And Ms. Williams is up here. One of the reasons that the five-year plan, yes, is for the trust fund is necessary. The Delta County's trust fund plan is tied to the, to the fairgrounds and theirs won't be completed for two years. So the odds of, of, if you put in, put a plan together and put it into the trust fund, if there's something already that you're tied with, the odds of getting any more funding are pretty much negligible to zero until you've completed the plan you have. Thank you.
Any more general public comment?
Hey, guys. Long time no see.
Yes.
I'd like to welcome the, the new board. I was really excited to hear some of the changes you guys have made. I disagreed with a lot or with some of the things the old board did. But I want to make caution on some of the things the, the new board is doing and that you guys don't kind of throw out the baby with the bathwater. With, with the experience I've had in the past, I was able to especially talk to my commissioner, Commissioner View. He's been very receptive to pretty much anything I've had to say and any previous knowledge. Unfortunately, when I'm watching on YouTube going, guys, no, 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 no. I can't do it at the time. And then I have to fill Commissioner View in on, on what's going on. And a lot of times he's able to inform the board and sometimes the board's receptive, sometimes they're not. On one issue that I was concerned about was when you got rid of people that had opposing views than you on the, the park board. Now, I also disagreed with the board getting rid of the previous park board of the people we had put together for Fuller Park. I thought a lot of them had opposing views from what I had, yet they were still really good points. When I was on the board, there was a lot of good points that were made from different people that are in this board right now or in this room right now. And we were able to craft, I thought, what was decent policy. Now, there were things that I was like, well, that'll slow down what we need or that will hinder what I want done. But it ended up crafting something that I thought was really well put together. Now, I, I want to remind you of your rules and procedure. And in your rules of procedure, if we go to 4.52217, you guys will see in there that members of all statutory standing and special committees may be removed for cause by a majority vote of the board after the individual had an opportunity to explain his or her actions and in a fair procedure and governing statutes. I don't feel that that took place in two weeks ago. I, I believe that an investigation should have taken place and at least have something more concrete. I believe with Commissioner Jensen, when he said that, you know, I really can't vote for this because there hasn't really been something that has been brought forward. And if we're removing people because of accusations, that is a really slippery slope as well. Now, I know Commissioner Matts or Mr. Mattson has been a controversial, controversial figure in the past, but he still, I thought, deserved a little bit more of a look at as far as being removed from this board. Now, after the investigation, if you guys found what was necessary and he was, needed to be removed, well, then sure, absolutely remove him. But as I run to return for this seat, I would like to see a little bit more transparency. And guys, just show your work. I feel like it's a little deja vu from a year and a half ago when I spoke to the previous board and said, just show your work. If you want to get it done, get it done, but go through the procedure. Thank you.
Any more public comment?
Andrew Holbert from Rapid. So expounding on what Johnson said, Robert rules revised, that motion never happened. If you break your rules, that never happened. There was no taking anyone off of any park committee. And I don't know how you clear up the minutes because now you approve minutes from something that didn't happen. And I don't even know, it's getting messy.
Any more public comment? Any more public comment? Public comment is done. Commissioner comments? Commissioner.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out here and attending the, with Zoom, or excuse me, with Zoom, excuse me, with.
YouTube?
YouTube, thank you. I did get to some meetings. I got to the Esconaba Township meeting, the Bark River Township meeting. Also went out and visited and walked through Obie Fuller Park. And I also went through Pioneer Trail Park, had a tour of that, seen those little cabins. I thought they looked very nice. Thought they were kind of neat. My next meeting's coming up this week will be the Brown. My next meeting's coming up this week will be the Brown, the Brown for, uh, Authority Meeting and the Upcap Meeting is what's next on the agenda for me. Thank you.
Commissioner View?
All right, I, let's see. I also visited Obie Fuller Park with Mr. Steve Wary. I have about a thousand mosquito bites to prove it. What a beautiful sight there. I just thought it would be good for the community to move forward with the pavilion and ideas that were brought forward a couple of years ago and come to fruition tonight to continue moving forward with that. I attended the Gladstone City Commission meeting, Escanaba Zoning, and Escanaba Township Board meetings. Lots of stuff going on in both, in all the communities. I won't divulge any of that, but people want to get ahold of me and have concerns about anything that came up there, I'd be willing to talk with them. I was contacted by a county resident who has an housing opportunity for a veteran. It's a country setting. He was, he's looking for a vet in the community, and I may probably go, get ahold of a couple of the vet, veterans organizations. But I wanted to make a public announcement that if they want further details, I can direct them to this person for a rental opportunity. Would also like to remind all the residents that our county vets, veterans are looking for support. Needing helping with our VSO office, officer being understaffed. It's the mill, the mileage of one-tenth of a mill is being requested on the November ballot. So go out and vote your conscience to help out our vets. We attended that Personnel Committee meeting. It's open to the public. We're going to probably have a few more in the, in the next month. Please, please join us. It'll be posted. Maintenance Supervisor Cory, I was talking with him the other day and along with some of the other letters that we used to get. Maybe we should look at having a floater employee for office duties. It seems like everybody has, a lot of the departments, like the airport, Cory himself told me, the courts. They're looking for someone just to fill in a few hours a month to do some of the office duties of all these departments. And maybe instead of trying to hire three, four part-time people, we could get someone that could be floating around helping out these areas when they need additional help at different times. When I was with Cory at the jail, he invited me over to the Delta Regional Child Advocacy Center. Sarah Sorensen, the director, and it's located behind the jail. It's kind of hidden. She gave me a tour of the place, introduced me to the staff and a brief description of what they do. And it's basically, basically safeguarding the children in our community. They provide services to the children, and they're non-offending caregivers. So people, children that are abused and stuff like that. This, this was a great place I knew nothing about, that is hidden behind the jail, that has a significant impact with all the issues that go on in the community of, I mean, they interview kids, they interview parents. Police departments are involved from all over the county. I do have cards if other people are interested in knowing about it. I'll, I'll give each commissioner one. She asked me to.
I went there too, I got one.
Okay, she asked me to, to turn it out. They have a nice pamphlet. I can direct anyone that's looking for something like that. And we did have our opioid task force. We came up with bylaws. We also came up with a mission statement. One of the next vital steps is how do we get community input on how to best spend the funding we have? Because I'll tell you, at the board, there's, we have, we're going to probably get about 100,000 a year, but we probably have a million dollars' worth of ideas to spend it on. So I'm, I'm going to try to think of ways we can survey the community and see what, with the parents and other people in the community, the schools, the sheriff's department. I'd like to get a survey that's a little different for each department. So it's not generic, so that we can get some ideas that way. We all, I also learned, and maybe I'm behind the times, there was an overview of the Student for Success Center, the Escanaba Student for Success Center. I know, I pronounce words bad, but that was a childhood gift of mine. And the Youth Empowerment Services, both of them directors gave some really powerful presentations about their programs that I've really learned about regarding strengthening the youth of our communities, especially those that need a little extra boost. So I thought that was pretty nice, too. Other than that, the class of 2024, I think everybody must be graduated now. I'm looking forward to every one of them having a successful career as they move forward. Have a little bit of fun, don't be wasteful, don't get in trouble, and enjoy your newfound freedom of getting a job. That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Kelly?
Commissioner Kelly, thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. I'll echo a lot of what Steve, Commissioner View, said. I also went to the Child Advocacy Center.
Right.
Yes, and had a, had a tour from Sarah Sorensen, and she explained everything that, that they do. And I have now a greater knowledge of the services they provide and, and what they see on a day-to-day basis. So I thank her and everybody for what they do. I know that they do have some committee openings, so they do have some applications in their office that you can pick up if you're interested in volunteering. We had a Parks and Recs meeting. I attended a seminar by the MEDC at the Terrace, learning innovative ways to bring economic development to the area. I attended my district's Escanaba City Council meeting. It was business as usual, they're updating some ordinances. I met with our Maintenance Director Cory Schrader and his Assistant Rich Heddington to get a great feel for all the work they do in our county buildings. I think we took a three-and-a-half-hour tour of everything. I got, even got to see all the plumbing in the new jail and how they unplug things, and it was quite an experience. But I, yeah, but I thank them very much for all the work that, that they do for our county. I did get a chance to, yesterday, to meet with Paul Geier, Ms. Young, and Commissioner Malner about our emergency preparedness plan. That was a, a great discussion as well. Commissioner Malner and I will be meeting tomorrow with Billaroo. They requested a meeting with us to talk about, you know, where things are right now and how things are going to be going forward. And I would just like to respond to former Commissioner Johnson's comment regarding the removal of Mr. Mattson. I had provided three very specific reasons on his removal in our agenda packet. I did request assistance from Administrator Young in collecting the data on the removal of Mr. Mattson. And Mr. Mattson was asked to come so that he could give his, you know, rebuttal to the reasons why I wanted him removed, and he chose not to come. He said he would not. So I feel that we followed the proper process. We did ask for a legal opinion on this as well. So just because it didn't appear in the meeting that things were, I don't know, I, I thought that we did fine, but I'm sorry for appearances sake that I wasn't more transparent. But if you read the agenda packet and asked questions at that time, I would have been able to answer them. So I'll just make sure that everything I do, I reiterate that's in the agenda packet as well. So thank you for your comment, and that's all I have.
Commissioner Jensen?
Everybody's been here a long time. I thank you for sticking around, so I'll, I'll make mine short. One of the things I want to apologize on the last meeting for, when I cited Public Act 192 of 1953 moving forward to create the Veteran Service Board to support our VSO, I'm actually reading the MCL, and for whatever reason, when I looked at it, I didn't cite it, so I apologize. It's actually MCL 35.621, and it was Sections 1 and Items 1 through 6. I just went right down the list, and I know those especially are probably watching more so than that are here. Makes a difference for them to be able to go back and look up the specific statute. So I apologize for omitting that when I went through. On the Child Advocacy Center, to date, they've seen 300 individuals. 200 of them are from this county. That should be a pretty big eye-opener, that we need that kind of resource to take care of 200 kids. We're, we're not even through the year yet. That should be scary. That should be real scary. They, they've already been told that their funding, where we were talking about grants, federal grants, that was a program that was originally a federally grant-funded program that they've already been told because of the way Health and Human Services has been reorganized at the federal level, that look at that grant funding, even though it was a mandated federal program, will be going away in the next four to five years. So plan on that now. So, you know, you have an organization and how busy they are now, already looking to try to do what they need to do for funding to be able to continue if and when that grant stops. Like I said, that's pretty, that's a pretty substantial amount of kids. And to be able to get them in the right place with the right people to even begin helping them is absolutely amazing. So definitely big kudos to them. I have nothing further from this evening.
Okay. Clerk Puzaki?
Nope, nothing, nothing.
Uh, like, like Commissioner Jensen said, we've been here long enough. So, next meeting schedule, regular board meeting of commissioners on 7/24 at 5:15 and 7/16 at 5:15. 30-day notices. There is a Park and Recreation Commission we're looking, and what we added was the Board of Canvases. So everybody have a good night, and I need a motion to adjourn.
Could you just specify the Board of Canvas are? That's Republican. One or two?
One.
One, okay. Motion to adjourn.
And then also, we were talking Parks and Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, so it'd be District 3, District 4, and District 5 that we're looking for applicants for.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.